Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for our City Council's study session. We'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Orr?
Here.
Flad?
Here.
Johnston?
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a Pocatello Arts Council update. Representatives from the Pocatello Arts Council will discuss the Arts Council's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning, City Council members. I'm Frank Hartley, for those of you who don't know me, and I'm the current chair-- can you hear me?
Yes.
And I'm the current Chair of the Pocatello Arts Council. We've had a really good year again, which is good. We were able to support Musicians West, which is an event that took place earlier this year at ISU. And that particular program brings in a concert pianist, chosen usually by, I think Mark Nyworth is the person that takes care of that. And that particular person comes in, performs master classes, and also holds a small concert for schoolchildren in Pocatello. So that was very successful. We also joined this year with the Idaho Humanities Council in support of a visiting writers' event that took place also at ISU, but was open to the public for all the events. And that's something that we always try to make sure that we incorporate into anything that we support, is that it reaches out to the community and doesn't just stay, you know, in the spot where it is and is not accessible to anyone else. Montana Shakespeare in the Park, we had two performances this year. And my understanding is we had, for both, for the combined performances, we had around 1,300 citizens from Pocatello come to the free performance. And we're always glad to support them. We also supported the Art Center, the Pocatello Art Center, to help them continue their Sagebrush Arts Festival. Over the last several years, they've seen a decline in artists that they were able to attract. And so we supported them with a cash grant to implement the application process that most major art fairs across the country use. And what it does is it allows an organization like Pocatello Art Center to become known throughout the country. So they get on this website, and that website puts out calls for artists. Artists themselves join the application at no charge, but they use it extensively to see what's going on, and where it is, when it is, how much it costs. And the feedback I got on that was that it was very successful for them. They actually had quite a few, almost 50 percent of the artists that attended were from out of state or out of the area. So we're glad to help with that. And if you recall, last time I was here, I requested that we be allowed to install those two sculptures. They were installed. Ryan Babcock, who is a member of the Arts Council and myself, on Father's Day, went over to Centennial Park and placed the fish sculpture there, right on the berm. It's directly across, not directly, but just north and on the west side of the river from the Charter School and the footbridge. It's just standing out there all by itself. So if you haven't seen it, you should take a look at it. It's really very nice. Really had a lot of good feedback just from people as I see them, you know, during the day. "Oh yeah, that's a really nice sculpture. Why didn't you put that up?" etc. And the bench is over in the Pre-History Park? Yeah. And it fits in there perfectly. So we were able to get that done without too much trouble. We're currently working on putting plaques on all of the work that we've put up over the last year and a half that we haven't labeled yet with artist's name, title, and so forth. Currently, we're entertaining a proposal by the folks from ISU that are putting on the Surviving Voices project that's taking place, I believe, in December, very December. And it deals with domestic violence, violence against women. And so they've come to us and asked for support in terms of providing money for the purchasing of materials, to create costumes. There's going to be a theater presentation that reflects stories of women from various nationalities, and also for makeup and some design elements that they need for their advertising purposes. So we haven't voted on that yet. We did have three of the members of that group come and visit us this past Monday. It was a very, very exciting presentation, and I'm sure the Arts Council will be there. The Idaho Food Bank, Terri Bergmeyer, I believe, is the person that runs that. She got in touch with me, and we've gotten together and talked about doing a, possibly doing a mural on the cinder block wall that's directly across the street. There's a parking lot across the street from the food bank. And then I think on the, okay, on the north end, there's a very long blank wall. And so she thought that it might be a good thing to have a mural there depicting food and hunger issues. So we're in the process of developing that. And then also, one other item that we're going to be working on shortly is in conjunction with the Old Town Actor Studio. They're proposing to put on a play titled The Hundred Dresses, which is a family-oriented play. And one of the things that they plan on doing is providing two free matinees to two nearby elementary schools over there. I'm not sure which ones they are. But anyway, they also need funding in order to purchase materials for costumes and so forth. So that's something else we'll be looking at. And I'm sure we've got a couple of other ideas floating around, but we just haven't addressed them yet. And that's what we've done so far since I was last here.
You haven't been busy at all, have you?
Not too bad.
Holy cow.
For volunteers, we're doing.
A lot of things after.
Any questions? Have any of you seen the sculptures?
I have.
What do you think?
I like them. I think they look good.
Yeah. I see room for more on that length of the river, you know? It could become a nice sculpture walkway or a sculpture park. So that's something that I've got in the back of my head.
There's always room for more. I like the idea of painting that wall also.
You had something to do with that, didn't you?
I did. They talked to me about it and asked me about it, and I told them to reach out to you and see what you thought, because I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, you had a very productive meeting, so.
Yeah, it was good.
It'll probably take us a year to get it going, but it's a lot of details to work on.
Well, it's in sections. I think it's in eight or 12-foot sections.
Right, so there's plenty of room for creative thought. It could become a huge mural. It could become panels with different subject matters. It's hard to say.
So it'd be kind of neat to see what that'll come up with.
We'll be hearing talk about it again, I'm sure.
That's I'm sure. I'm sure. Any other comments, questions?
Thanks, Frank.
Frank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. And on behalf of the council, we do want to thank the mayor and the City Council for your support, and we hope that you'll continue to give it to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, is a Senior Activity Center update. Representatives from the Senior Activity Center Board of Directors will be present to discuss the following topics with the City Council. One, list of needs pertaining to the building where the center is housed at 427 North Sixth Avenue. Two, senior activity center long-term goals. And three, possible reorganization of the center. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the Pocatello City Council. My name's Diane Bilyeu, for those of you that don't know me. And this is Mavis, who is our Chairman of our Board, and you know Mr. Transtrom, I'm sure. I am a Board Member at the Senior Activity Center, and I am Chair of their newly-formed Planning Committee. And I would just like to say, first of all, thank you very, very much for the support that you give to the senior center, because without you, I don't think we could stay open. And also, thanks for giving us the time to give you an overview of our center and to share our future plans. As you know, and was stated, we are located at 427 North Sixth in a very old building. It is approximately 7,400 square feet. And our mission at the center is to provide nutritious meals, activities, and socialization for seniors 60 and over. We serve breakfast on Tuesday and Thursday mornings, and lunch five days a week. We have a suggested luncheon price of around $5, but if someone cannot pay, that is all right also. We have 1,210 members at the current time, and we serve around 1,000 hot lunches a month. Last year, we served about 13,000 senior lunches. Some of our activities that we provide are, and I will just list these for you, and every time I think of something, I'm going, "Oh, and we do this." Anyway, we do Friday and Saturday dances. We have blood pressure check, balance classes. We have pinochle. Wii bowling. If you've never done any Wii bowling, you're missing out on a lot. It's fun. Weight loss program. In fact, the Wii bowling, I've got to tell you this, because I have that equipment, and my kids, my grandkids loved it. And so I was quite good at the bowling. Not good at the other games, but.
I do weed golfing. Is that the same?
Oh, do you? Well, yeah, it's Wii, but I wasn't good at the golfing. Thank you. But anyway, so that's one of the areas that you can enter for the senior games. And I thought about it, and I went to one of the practices, and I wasn't as good as I thought I was. So I didn't enter the senior games.
So have any of the seniors thrown the controller through the TV?
Not as far as I know. If they keep it on their wrist, they're okay. Anyway, the weight loss program, Zumba. I also did Zumba. And it was a good Zumba. It was a good workout. And bridge, they provide. You have, you know, meetings at bridge. Hand and foot, a toenail clinic, silver chord singing, dance lessons, karaoke, jackpot bingo, and that's a very popular activity for the seniors. Creative writing, billiards, and, well, I was thinking, oh, and I know they have fashion shows, because I was in the one. So were you, Mavis. And we were quite good, if I do say so myself. Anyway, but, you know, basically, these nutritious meals, activities, and the socialization really help prevent senior depression, loneliness, and it helps keep them in their own homes. So our biggest challenge at this point is our building. It's old, and it's run down. And when I agreed to chair this planning committee, I personally felt that we needed representatives from Pocatello, Chubak, and the county. And so, of course, I immediately asked Gary Moore, your own Gary Moore, who is also a Board Member at the senior center.
And a senior.
And a senior.
And a weed golfer.
But I don't think you participated in the games, did you, the senior games? We'll get you next year, Gary. Wii golf? I don't know.
I want you to get Gary in the 100-yard dash there.
Well, they do have races. Yeah, they do. And the other person on my committee of three was Melanie Evans, who's on the City Council of Chubak. And Commissioner Tovey was the one that I asked for, but he has sent Tiffany Olson to represent him, and she's terrific, by the way. And so maybe she's better than he. I don't know. But she's really good. And so my hope is that with these three entities, that they can come together and develop something for our community. When we met, and we've only met, I guess, once, but we were all in agreement that what we need is a new facility for our senior citizens. And of course, you all know that, you know, we are having more and more senior citizens. But we primarily discussed the possibility of funding and possible locations. The Porton Health Trust seems to be a natural fit for a new center. And then the other area that we were thinking was to create a bonding district. Melanie Evans, who's on the council in Chubak, I don't know if you know her. She's terrific. If you haven't met her, you really should. Anyway, she informed us at our meeting that Chubak is looking at a recreation facility, which would include an area for senior citizens. They would also have a senior citizen area. And Chubak, this week, appropriated $50,000 for a study with apparently a very well-known developer of recreation centers. And he is out of, I think, Provo, Utah. He will be giving them his findings and proposal in just a few weeks. And so I think one of the things, at least that Melanie told me, was that they will want and they need a joint partnership, which would be, hopefully, with Pocatello and with the county and other agencies. Anyway, we are not asking you for money, yet. We may at some point, but we would like you to keep these seniors and the center in mind. And, you know, they have all worked very hard all their lives, and they've paid taxes and contributed greatly to our community. And my opinion, they deserve, and we all deserve, a senior center to be proud of. Thank you very much. I do have some photos to hand out to you that tell, will tell a little story, and I don't know how great they are. I took them with my own phone and printed them out, and they're just in black and white. But, well, you can help me, yeah.
Have you got one either?
You go ahead and sit, Charlie.
I was going to do that, but they paid me to.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's all right. She's got a couple over there.
Oh, well. But the first page, basically, and I took a couple of pictures, and of course, it's not in color, sorry, but just some of the posters that are up down there. One is on bingo, and one was on, what else? The next one was on, oh, mine's upside down. The health department is going to be at the senior center to give flu shots. I mean, there're just things like that that are going on all of the time. And did I give you one of these, Gary? Okay. Then you will, the next picture you will see, and I just took this yesterday, some people that were playing pinochle. The next page shows basically the same people, but just a couple of them. And you can see this door, and you can see the, yeah, the stall. It's stained. As long as I've been affiliated with the senior center, I mean, that ruins it. Disaster, right? Anyway, the next page, you can see it better. Then the next one is a picture of some deterioration, and that's on the, is that on the inside or the outside? It's on the inside. No, that's maybe on the outside. Then the next one is on the outside, the one with all of the debris at the bottom. And then the next ones show the bricks and how the mortar is coming out. And the next one is also the same thing on the outside of the building. Is that all that I have? Is that it? Anyway, and those are, that's just a snapshot of the senior center. But we need a new center. And we've talked about, you know, should we tear the one down that's there and replace it? There are several problems with doing that. You know, first of all, the parking is not adequate. And so, anyway, I guess what I'm doing is throwing it in your lap, and you guys figure it out.
That's a good statement.
Was that good? Okay. Anyway, are there any questions that I can answer for you, or Mavis, or?
Couple of comments. You know, the center serves a lot of seniors. It's amazing. It's amazing how many activities that go on there. And I think the city has done a really nice job of offering up the building and what we put into the building and Lynn's help along the way to keep it from falling down. I mean, he's always under the gun to fix something, because there's always something to fix there. And long term, that's just not going to work. So we've had discussions over the last couple of years. A couple of years ago, we actually had some, I think it was nutritionists people through ISU do a little research on what a senior activity center does for seniors as far as health and wellness. And that's what it's all about. It's all about health and wellness, as far as nutrition, having people to hang out and do stuff with. It's just a perfect fit. So, you know, we've determined, we have determined, it's a perfect fit for the Health Trust. And we've approached the Health Trust a little bit with, you know, we realized they've got a million things going on. They have a million people wanting their money. And we think that this should become a priority. And we think that the way to make that happen is to get the City Council of both Pocatello and Chubak and the Vanny County Commissioners all on the same page to work with the Health Trust to make something happen. And it would be something the Health Trust could do nowhere near the scope of some of the things that they've already done. It's not like it's going to tie up their money for years, but we really think that's what it's going to take to make it happen. We're not going to get a bond. You know, we know how strapped the cities are for capital monies. We understand that. But this, my hope is, and our hope as a senior center is, is that we can get the local governments on board to work with the healthcare trust, maybe over the next year or two, to make something happen, because that's really what it's going to take to make it happen. Roger?
So you're feeling like this is such an essential component of community health, that it's a natural dovetail for the?
Absolutely. And anybody that's involved in health and senior health will tell you that. There's good statistics out there.
Keeps people from going to other living centers and stuff like that.
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah.
Casper, over.
Lynn, I won't hold you to this, but if there was to be a building erected today, what would you estimate the square footage cost to build the building would be?
I imagine you're probably in the 200, at least the $200 square foot range.
That's correct, and everything that I've read, 200 and something square foot.
And how big's the building we're in now?
7,000.
7,400, yeah.
If I may add, the site that we're at down there has inherent problems. The water intrusion. I mean, there's no way to really fix what is there. It's built in a hole, and every time we get rain, snow, or anything else, we have water problems at that facility.
I'm glad you don't, you didn't say it's an old refuge, a refuge site, but what's the average cost to construct a family living dwelling, a home?
You know, moderate constructions, probably in the $80 range.
Eighty to 100?
Yeah.
So how come buildings like this are another $100 square foot more?
Well, this is more of a commercial facility. You're going to have, you know, all of the plumbing facilities will be commercial grade. It's got a kitchen. It's got type-one hoods. It's probably going to have a fire suppression system, those kinds of things.
That makes a difference. Well, I just wanted to, you know, out there the idea of what this is at. And then how many square feet do you believe the senior citizen center should be, or do you know at this point?
Well, let me just comment. You know, at first, I was thinking like double the size that it is now, which would be about 15,000 square feet. I think it will be interesting to see what the person that is doing the study for Chubak, what they develop from a square footage standpoint. Of course, they will be going beyond just a senior center. But I think that will perhaps give us some kind of an idea. But I was thinking doubling the size of the center that we have now. And then in addition, you need more land for parking.
Yeah. So just for the building, depending on where we go, if we kept it the same size, approximately 1.5 million, just for the building, if you double it, then it's going to be, you know, 3.5 million, plus the ground, plus the furnishing, and so on and so forth. So, well, yeah, it'd be interesting to see what this, I hope he includes that. You said that he was just going to do, they just commissioned a community center, but I'm assuming he's going to incorporate.
Well, my understanding is that, I mean, he also will develop for them a plan. And I think this is one of the concerns that we have, and certainly at the wellness complex they have right now, and that is sustainability. How are you going to sustain, so you get it built, how are you going to sustain it? And I think that's one of the things that apparently this developer will provide them, is the one that is apparently is just gorgeous in Provo. We don't need anything that big. But they make money. They make money on the activities that they have.
And the model that they're looking at is a combination, activity center, senior center.
Right.
The activity center has a certain number of hours during the day that's just for seniors. So it's a kind of a dual purpose. Is the model?
That's what she was talking about, yeah.
So do we drop the age to 50, or do you just don't want those?
If you want to.
Well, I didn't know whether you just didn't want that juvenile aspect coming in there, setting things up. So, thank you, Diane.
Those kids are real noisy, those 50-year-olds.
They get out of control a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for all your--
Any other comments?
Yeah, the mayor's in that.
Thank you, Gary, very much for your input on that.
Can I?
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Mavis.
One of the things that we're thinking about and that we have to realize is that the younger people who are becoming senior citizens are healthier and more knowledgeable. I mean, they're doing a lot of classes and this sort of thing. And these are the things that we want to incorporate, both the opportunity to learn. We just don't have the space right now to have classes so that they can do too much of studying. And so these are the things that we have, that we're looking to, is the younger people become older and become senior citizens. And they won't come now, because they say they're not that old. And they're really not. Physically, they're really not. But they have some great ideas, and it would be great to incorporate them. If we had a nice building, I think they would come. Right now, they feel like the building is just to run down for their taste. And so we're looking to build something that all, all seniors will enjoy coming to.
We had an interesting conversation the other day at our Board meeting. Somebody mentioned the earthquakes and the hurricanes and stuff going on, and thought that maybe we should have a plan at the senior center if there was some kind of a tragedy like that in the area, that we could take care of seniors there. And then we kind of looked at each other and thought, nah, probably not, because that building's probably going to fall down.
It'll be the first to go.
That's kind of how that.
Have a plan to take care of seniors, just not there.
Just not there, exactly, yeah.
But again, I would like to join Diane in thanking the City Council for the generosity that you have given to the seniors throughout the years. We're very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One point that I would bring to everyone's attention is, you know, the city does own that facility. We have a lease agreement on that facility. And the lease agreement states that the city-- And the lease agreement states that the city of Pocatello is responsible for the exterior, the outside of that building, and that the tenant is basically responsible for the interior repairs and alterations, things of that nature, which is heat systems and so forth. And I believe at the present time, we even have air conditioning units that is on there that is part of the lease agreement for the tenant, that they have not had the funds to take care of. So, you know, it is deteriorating and going downhill.
How many units they got, Lynn?
I believe that there's two or...
Replace one.
I think there's three units. And we also have to be aware that that facility is also part of the Bonneville Neighborhood Association, and they have some dealings with that, you know, with how that facility's managed.
Thank you, Diane, for showing us the problem with the exterior. Lynn, why have you not brought that to our attention?
I'll think about it.
I would like to ask, and maybe Daryl can answer this. I'm thinking of insurance. Some of the flooding that has occurred, and I know it happened just a week or so ago in the one area where you enter, does our insurance cover that at all?
You know, I'm not sure how that falls into our insurance coverage where we own the building. That's a question I would have to pose to our legal department.
I wish that you would, because if the insurance would cover some of that, it'd be helpful.
Yeah.
And by the way, we are meeting with the Bonneville group.
Today?
Their room this afternoon, and encouraging them to participate in getting the room up to standards as long as we have that building. So, I just want to reassure you that we're doing everything we can. We're a new board. We just came in in January. We've had a zillion things to learn and grow. It's been great, but we see a lot of potential, so we're excited. But we're doing everything we can. Just want to let you know that.
Fantastic. Casper, break.
The Bonneville Neighborhood Association was something I was going to reference, because my experience is, until you have them on boards, you don't have a full ask in terms of changing, because they're pretty tied to that building.
That has to be addressed, right.
And so, until you get them as your partners in this, you're up against something.
You know, I'm not sure that, you know, if the building is in a different location, I think they would not care for that. I think they really are tied to that location.
And part of the reason that they have say in the facility is because that facility had some leverage on their part all along. And so, until we get both parties in accord, I don't know how we can move on that.
Well, let's move forward anyway, you know.
Well, we're going to be stuck with the building if they're not along with you. Understand that.
Yeah, I know that. And the one room that I took the picture of that had the, I don't know, the saw, but people were playing peanut colossus in that room, that is the Bonneville room.
And this will be addressed today. We will talk about this today. Unfortunately, Idaho Purse is still the one that's on the board, and she never comes. And so, we're getting the chairman of the committee to come and talk to us about the room and about the future of the building.
Years ago, I had several dealings between the two groups. And just, I will say, the Bonneville Neighborhood Association was pretty cooperative. Sometimes the association doesn't have the power of a couple of individuals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll move on to agenda item number four, proposed changes to animal services volunteer program. Brett Nix, animal service director, will be present to give a brief update on proposed changes to animal service volunteer program that will address concerns regarding the ease with which individuals can volunteer. Brett, how are you?
Well, sir. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Brett Nix, animal services director. I put the, my apologies, you have to share. I put the recently changed voluntary manual and SOP up in front of you guys. You should have got it in a PDF form as well. I wanted to put that before you. The first question I was asked when I was before you, or one of the first things brought up, was the volunteer program and how hard it was to volunteer. So, we sat down and redesigned that pretty much within the first month or two. The first step of that was redesigning the manuals and the SOPs, giving clear guidance to volunteers on what can, can't be done, and doing it in a manner that isn't a list of do-nots. So, there's nothing worse than opening up a manual or something that you're looking to give your free time, and there's four pages of what you can do and one page of what you can't do. So, we branded it, put some photos in it, made it look a little more friendlier, a little easier to read through. It is a bit of material that also goes in conjunction with an orientation that lasts about an hour and a half, two hours. We run those orientations two times a month, generally, time allowing. We have an event that takes it up. My volunteer coordinator also serves as my event coordinator and a few other things. So, sometimes we're down to once a month. The next thing we did was lower the age to 16. We went through the legal department, and we asked them with parental approval. There should be a waiver in there that we actually ran through legal and court, and we lowered the age down to 16 for volunteers. That allowed a large group of our high school students, honor society students and whatnot that needed hours, to come volunteer with us. Typically, and in the past, I've had almost no issues with my minors volunteering. Typically, they become some of my best volunteers. They're usually looking to go out and get work later on. They're looking to get scholarships, grants, and whatnot for college. So, they show up, they love animals, and they usually do a really good job. They're some of my best customer service volunteers, too, because you can send them off to talk to just about anybody, usually. We did implement a volunteer database. I was able to squeeze it into my IT budget. It runs about $20 a month. What that allows me is an online application. So, you can apply online, and I will have that application, or my volunteer coordinator will have that application within seconds. It dumps that application directly into a database, which allows us to make contact with volunteers, usually within the week. So, if you put in an application, the time is down to about four days before you talk to somebody from the shelter to schedule an orientation and then get through the program. The database also provides a way of mass communication. We can email our volunteers by sections, by fosters, by age group, by people that do events. So, it allows us to sort of, logistically, it allows much easier access to our volunteers and talking to them. There is a website component to that. That won't be active until later this year. We will have a website specifically for our volunteers to sign up for events, to sign up to come into the shelter, to know about our pets of the week, and those sorts of Sorry, a little brain-dead. The goal of the entire program, when we redesigned it, was to reduce the time from application to touching something fuzzy and actually, you know, making a difference. We've done that. We're down to about a week. If you put in an application on Monday, by Saturday, we can have you volunteering. We do a lot of individual orientations, if need be. We get people who are very interested. We moved the community service folks into the volunteer department rather than have them separate. The reality is, is they may have community service or a debt they need to pay to society. However, they chose to come to us. They didn't choose to do it somewhere else. They chose to come do it at our shelter. Therefore, they're pretty much treated the same as volunteers. And trust me, the volunteers all work anyway, so it isn't, there's plenty of work to go around on that. Tentatively, I didn't put together hard numbers for you guys, because we're still kind of fumbling through it within the first four months of putting this together. But we've seen roughly, this time and last year, we had 57 total volunteers, 19 that were active at given time within the month of August. This year, we have 175 volunteers on record and 91 that are given time within the month of August. Hour-wise, we saw 411 hours from volunteers alone. Those are people that came to our building and volunteered. We're at 622 for last month. So, we captured a market that could only give us a few hours a day, which is fine. I don't need you to show up for eight hours to volunteer. We kind of already had that market. We captured the younger kids, the folks that can come in after work. We've got one or two that come in on lunch breaks. We captured that market, which increased our hours by about 50%, and then increased our total volunteers that are active by about 375%. We did also increase the fosters, which is a program with inside the volunteer department that has increased quite a bit. Our foster hours are up 3,000% over last year's, primarily because I've got more cats than I can shake a stick at at the moment. So, we were nice enough to get a lot of our volunteers that double as fosters, or fosters come in to take litters of kittens and whatnot. That program also currently resides within the volunteer department, and we'll be working together to put a manual and a more structured program hopefully this winter. I just wanted to bring that before you. That was one of the questions I had gotten when I first got here, wanted to let you know that we've made pretty significant progress on it. It's a bit of a shock to my volunteer coordinator, her apologies for not being here. Unfortunately, she's ill. But it's moved along quite well. We've seen a significant increase within the four months that we've had it running. If you had any input, just wanted to make sure if you had input that you had an opportunity to say yea, nay, or, oh my God, what did you do?
Thanks for all your work on that.
I think it's great, you get that many volunteer hours. It's pretty neat.
Yeah, we bumped it up. It's made a bit of a difference. I mean, the reality is, I only need five volunteers to give me about one hour, and I've got my entire adoption kennel walked, which it doesn't seem like much, but 10 minutes out in the yard with somebody's pretty much, for a dog that's been stuck in a kennel all day and only, you know, hadn't been there since the morning, it's pretty much, you know, it can be a lifesaver to them. It keeps them from going crazy. And then, we have the endless piles of laundry and whatnot that my volunteers are amazingly enough willing to sort through.
Maybe we need to hire you also to use your expertise in giving us some feedback on some of these other software programs. Apparently, you were able to do something much quicker in time.
Yeah, this program's pretty ubiquitous in the industry for volunteering. It's fairly well-known. I'm lucky to have used it before. To be honest, the first time I got handed it, I was like, this, no thanks. I'm, you know, I'm an Excel spreadsheet guy. I can run just about anything out of an Excel spreadsheet all day and seven days long. And I wasn't necessarily completely on board with it, but it took me less than a month to figure out that just the ability to communicate with different sets of volunteers, to track hours, to track time, to produce a website, which generates buy-in from their volunteers, just that sort of thing is well worth the money we paid for it, and it's not much at all. We do have the lowest model, so we can house maybe 500 volunteers at any time or 250, and we have to purge into paper when they roll out. But it is, functionally, it is incredibly useful for that sort of program.
That's awesome.
Questions?
Thanks, Brett.
Thanks, Brett. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. You all did that.
Appreciate it. You, too. We'll move on to agenda item number five, proposed central fleet maintenance department for city vehicles and equipment. Tom Kirkman, street operations superintendent, will give a presentation regarding the development of a central fleet maintenance department that would centralize all city vehicles and equipment maintenance. Tom?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, street operations superintendent. I'm joined with Teresa Cottell of the street department and Jeff Mansfield, our public works director, city engineer. Before we get started, I wanted to just have a little love fest for a minute. I want to publicly thank Teresa Cottell for all the work she's done. She's been gathering data and compiling data like crazy on top of her normal workload, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate my staff at the street department, because they've really picked up the slack where we've been kind of hammered through this, so. And then, also, Jeff, Heather, and Joyce have been great resources. We've been pestering them like crazy, so we appreciate their patience with us. Okay, so, we came to you a few months ago to talk about a centralized fleet program. Our mission hasn't really changed. We're evaluating methods to develop a more coordinated and consistent approach to managing the city's fleet.
Okay.
Perfect. And then, develop a plan that improves service levels and drives down fleet costs. That hasn't really changed. That's kind of where we're shooting for with this whole thing. So, we moved on to phase one. This is basically a review of what we talked about last time we were here. We talked about we collected and analyzed data relative to the city's current fleet. So, what we did is we gathered data from our central fueling system. We talked about the last time, a lot of departments weren't putting their mileage in, so we had kind of a hard time, you know, getting the cost per mile and figuring those things out. And with your help, you allowed us to ask all the departments to enter their mileage, and they all stepped up really well. I think the first week, only 20 people out of 400 transactions didn't. So, it shows that they're on board with this. We also went around and interviewed staff and visited other work sites. We met with all the department heads and their staffs. Had pluses and minuses come out of that. Two of the biggest concerns, I guess you could say, that we had through that was repair prioritization. Where do I lie in the food chain, so to speak? And then, some of the departments maybe run a little lean, and sometimes they're using their mechanics for other functions to pick up some of the slack. And so, there was some concern about that, that they might be a little short-staffed if they lose their mechanics. We used the fuel site data and as much data as we could gather nationwide to identify improvement priorities. In the city of Pocatello, pretty much every department handles their own maintenance program for their fleet. And so, some are really good at taking records and some aren't. And so, we've had a little bit of a struggle trying to tailor this to our assets. And so, we've relied on other communities and organizations to try and fill in those gaps of where we need to put those in. And then, we developed an improvement approach and an action plan, and that's what we're going to talk about a little today. So, this, we just tried to kind of keep it at 30,000 feet to see if this is something you guys were interested in pursuing. It appeared you were, so we were dropping it down to the deck right now, 1,000 feet, and we're going to kind of get into it. So, phase two, we compiled data to collect, or collected data to project what our staffing levels would need to be. The Army Corps of Engineers, way back when, they devised a system called VEUs, vehicle-equivalent units. And what they used it for is, if they were sending supplies overseas, they wanted to know how many supplies, how many people they needed to send. So, they started breaking all of their assets into VEUs. And so, for example, a typical sedan is one VEU. A dump truck would be four VEUs. And so, it's just an aggregate that you can use to try and equalize those and make it manageable, so you can compare apples to apples. Throughout the years, the American Public Works Association has kind of fine-tuned that. They've gathered a lot of data from other public works agencies throughout the nation, and they've kind of tried to nail that down a little better and make it a little bit more easy to use and more accurate. So, we've grabbed from a number of different sources. We've listed a few here. We got information from the government fleet publication, APWA, the city of Casper, city of Spokane. We've spoken with Banta County. We've worked with city of Boise, Idaho Falls. Idaho Falls, we really haven't been able to coordinate and get up there, but we're working with them and we spoke with them to try and get some of their tape, because they're a centralized fleet as well. What we've discovered is, we have about 1,538 VEUs. A normal mechanic throughout a year can handle about 125 VEUs. And so, you just basically divide the total amount by how much a mechanic can handle per year. And the way that formula works is, you take the amount of the 2,080 hours that he works a year, minus his sick leave, his vacation, his training time, you know, days off, blah, blah, blah. And then, you work it out to how many hours that is. And then, we use a 65% utilization, which means that 65% of the time, he's actually turning a wrench. That's kind of what the industry does. That's a little low, but it gets it conservative. Through that, we worked out that we need approximately 14 mechanics citywide. The great news is, we have 14 mechanics citywide.
Did you take the average or the median?
The average.
The average.
Because there's a huge discrepancy between these numbers.
Exactly. So, the best way to establish your own VEUs for your own place is to track and have good data. We didn't have that, so we just kind of tried our best to do the best we could with what we had. It's going to, if we move down this road, it's going to take us a year or two before we can actually start tailoring this to our location. So, as we said, we have 14 mechanics, and that's what the staffing levels worked out to, based upon as close of an estimate as we can get. Unfortunately, some of the distribution, we went and did VEUs per department, and some of the distribution's a little off. Some departments don't have near enough, some may have a little too many. And so, this could, if we centralized, this could help remedy some of those concerns that happen. We worked with human resources and kind of put a proposed organization of what we think this would look like. We'd have a fleet manager that would run the day-to-day operations. We would have a fleet specialist, which would deal mostly in procurement. That person could be like the procurement officer for the city. There's a plethora of resources nationwide that we can use and we're currently not using. There's the National Joint Powers Agreement, the NGPA. And what it is, is, for instance, Caterpillar will send out a bid nationwide, and they'll give you a price on a road grader, let's say. And because of the volume, they get that price really low. the volume, they get that price really low. Well, there is a state statute in Idaho that says you can piggyback off the NGPA. And so, there's opportunities that if you need to buy a truck, and maybe the state contracts X, you can get on the NGPA, and you might find it cheaper in Alabama. And then, you can go to the dealer and say, well, you, or to the manufacturer and say, will you honor Alabama's price in Idaho? And there's been a huge amount of success with that nationwide, of getting levels of vehicles, equipment. They've got paper. I mean, this NGPA, it's a book really thick, and it kind of covers everything. So, I think if we had a person that specialized in procurement, I think you could see a huge return on that investment, if that's what they do all the time. An electronic specialist, this is similar to like what the police department have. It's can be called an EVT, an emergency vehicle technician, or an outfitter. Police car comes, they're the ones that put sirens on, put the backsplash behind the driver, that kind of stuff on there. If we're going to do police and firework, it's always better to have one or two EVTs on staff. And it's basically a certification class you take. We could have 10 of them, we could have two of them. It's a pretty easy certification to get.
And would they be doing other electronic stuffs on other cars?
They could, absolutely, because they're going to be really professional at wiring. And that's another good point. We have two-way radios in all of our vehicles. We currently, I think all departments are the outside source, the radio installs and stuff like that. So, then we move to the service rider. This would be the person that's, as a department calls and says, my car's got X problem. He's the one that gives them a projected time of what it's going to take, and tries to schedule it and work it into, arrange the logistics of getting it to and from. That person would also be a hands-on person, that would mechanic as well. And then we've put mechanics and welders. There's departments that have welders throughout the city. We don't know if that makes sense to move them all into one location, but I think there's a benefit to that. If you've got a $5,000 welder in three locations, the machine, you know, there's economies of scales of buying solo. So, the other nice thing that we can move forward to with this procurement person, if we want to get to a centralized supply, which a lot of these fleets lead into, you know, then you have warehousing, you can store reams of paper that you can buy for pennies on the dollar, cleaning supplies, what about that? So there's just a lot of options there. So what we did next is we performed a facility needs assessment. This is another Army Corps of Engineers formula that the APWA uses. It makes it kind of easy for us. So what it says is, a typical mechanic needs two bays worth of space to work. And those two bays equal 22 to 45 feet. They're 22 by 45 feet. So 1,900 square feet is approximately the footprint that one technician or mechanic needs. Multiply it by the 14, you had 1,500 square feet for support staff, and there's your, and there's your facility. So, in order to staff this place and have it up and running, you're going to need a facility about 29,000 square feet, if it's fleet alone. We had talked about maybe locating the fleet with street, so we gave you that as well. Street, we're currently 16,000 square feet. So you add that together with, we subtracted our mechanic's bays because they were already counted in the fleet. And it puts us at about 50,000, 45,000 square feet for a need for those two departments. Any questions on that?
Yeah. If you really need a name of it, just call it, when you build it, call it Fleet Street. I like that.
Councilman Orr.
You included the street department, okay. So, the fleet department, what does that include? Where's the sanitation and fire department?
So, each department would still have their equipment on site for their daily operations. So, when sanitation shows up, they have their garbage trucks. When it needs repaired, that's when it would go to this other location.
Okay, so, but, well, don't you need a bigger bay for a fire truck over an ambulance or a car?
Absolutely. These bays are based on a 22-foot wide by 45 deep, and so, the bays are going to be 22-deep, so, or 22-wide.
Okay.
To facilitate.
All right. You got that covered. Thanks.
Yeah. And so, it adds to the cost per square footage, you know, to build, because you got to make them high. Any questions on that? We've also worked with HR a lot. We've got a draft together of a policy manual. It's pretty thick. It ranges anywhere from an anti-idling policy to a vehicle replacement policy. It's very in-depth and very detailed. We can get you guys copies if you'd like to see it, but it's, we're pretty proud of it. It spells out everything pretty good. The biggest thing that we like about it is it puts in place a replacement criteria. What we've established is a ranking system for vehicles. Just for instance, the year gets one point, you know, if it's however much percentage of the cost of the asset you're spending per year gives it a certain amount. If it's an emergency respond vehicle, it gives it, and then it gives you a number, so that you can put a variable, or an actual number on the replacement. So if you come to the end of the year and you don't know which vehicle you want to replace, the one with the highest number is the one you go with. And so, if we have a centralized fleet department that's kind of managing this, what I envision moving forward would be nice is, this allows some departments that maybe get left out every now and then, parks, for instance, they have a lot of, this gives them an opportunity to have a little fight in it, you know? And you'll have a third-party department that comes in and says, yeah, we need police cars, we need, you know, street equipment, but you also need to be able to get to the park to maintain it. And so, it gives a lot of equality to all the departments, because you have a person that's kind of above everything, that's got kind of a holistic approach to the whole program.
So, moving forward over the years, would, are those vehicles still going to be Parks and Rec Department, or are they going, all of the vehicles going to be fleet vehicles, and you're just assigning them wherever you assign them?
Okay, so there's two different, that's a great question. There's two different models that are used nationwide, for the most part, is you either have a central repair shop or a central motor pool. The central motor pool means the fleet department buys every asset from every department, and then you basically are renting it to that department. Most people shy away from that because it has a tendency to, for lack of better words, promote a little bit of greed. If somebody needs a backhoe for two days, they're going to rent it out for three weeks, or, you know, two weeks, because they want to have it when they want it, you know? And so, moving, the way I look at it right now, the motor pool could be something good down the road, but I don't think we're there yet. I think for us, it would be good to centralize the fleet, get it going. But in the future, I think that could be a very good option.
Yeah, let's crawl, walk around with this.
Tom?
So, what I'm hearing through is you, it's an objective analysis of every vehicle. So, like, we kind of go, we got to get rid of these five vehicles because they've got too much mileage. And you're saying that the formula would look at how much you've invested in a vehicle, all those type of things. So, instead of having to get rid of five that are up, we might get rid of four that are up and one that's just a lemon.
Right.
By its record, from a pre, you know, it's only three years old because it's just too costly.
Exactly.
And heavy. Or, we might keep a couple of them because they're really well-performing vehicles for another two years. I mean, you have an analysis of every vehicle is what I'm hearing.
That is awesome. That's exactly it, yeah. And so, what else is nice is, we'll get to this in a minute about a fleet management program. Through the fleet management program, what you can do is you can also track how fast that asset's deteriorating, like what you're saying is a lemon. So, you come to the end of the year and you go, okay, the street superintendent needs a new truck, or this police car. Well, this police car over the last two years has gained 15 points in a short amount of time because it's not a very good car. Well, that's when you start saying, okay, the rate of degradation is way worse. If these two are both about the same replacement, you're going to go with the one that's degrading faster. And so, we've passed you out a copy of this. It's a pretty, it's a pretty neat system. It's weighted. So, if you're spending a higher percentage on repairs for what the asset is worth, that gives it a higher value. When you get to like 80, if you're spending 80% of the cost of the asset on repairs, that, I mean, that's a huge red flag to get it going. So, any questions on that? And that's something that's, that can morph, you know? That's something that we, that's a first stab at, you know, if we move this thing forward, something we'll talk about in a minute, is I think we need to develop a fleet advisory board, so that we have everybody's buy-in on this. And everybody feels like they're getting, you know, their fair share at what's going on. And it keeps the fleet department honest.
So how do we save money? If right now, what we're doing is, all right, we're done with this truck, I guess, the street department's done with this truck, maybe WPC can have it. WPC's done with it, so we just pass it around until the parks get it, and they use some duct tape and twine and hold it together until the door falls off.
Where'd they get the duct tape from?
They, it wasn't part of their budget. They brought it from.
Okay.
How, from our current model, if you want to call it that, to going to something like this, how does that utilize our dollars better?
Okay. When we get to phase three, if you can give me a minute?
Yep.
We'll get to that, and I'll, and we'll plan that through. Basically, what it goes through is...
Well, then, on this point, as you look at this rating, this ranking, is there a way to tell if a certain department or employee is being harder on a vehicle than necessary?
Absolutely. And that's where it comes in when we talk, we'll talk about a fleet management program. That's where it's going to become pivotal, because we're going to start collecting data, and then we can start analyzing driving patterns. We've got aggressive driving policies in our policy manuals. Moving forward, I mean, it's like Councilman Orr said, we're crawl and walk and run. In the future, I see GPS units in all vehicles, so that you can actually track a cost per mile. These new units have accelerometers in it. They check, you know, aggressive driving, excessive braking. We have them on our vehicles at the street department, and it's been eye-opening. You know, if we see a truck that eats brakes up a lot, and you look on that, and you say, whoa, there's a harsh braking event, there's another one, there's another one, then you're able to talk to that person and try and correct that problem.
So what this would build in is an accountability, well, when you're by yourself driving.
Exactly. There's even, there's even, we added a seatbelt policy to the car, you know, and the cell phone policy. Some of the GPSs are so smart now, on modern vehicles, if you don't plug your seatbelt in, there's a little, the little light comes on. Well, the GPS can use that light as a trigger. And if that car drives for more than X amount of seconds with that light on, it sends a flag. It'll send an email that that person's not wearing their seatbelt. It's a little Big Brother-y, but there's a lot of options. That's something that, as we move it forward with the fleet advisory board, that's, it's just a matter of how deep we want to go.
Well, and some of that stuff, I would guess produces a data pool by which you can influence your insurance rates.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, and we use it in the winter. We'll have people that call and say, you haven't plowed our street all year. And we're able to pull a report and say, the truck was here at 4:30 in the morning. You just didn't see it because you were in bed, you know? And so, it's helpful.
It's like eight hours that you look.
Yeah. So, GP, telematics is what they're calling it nowadays, is a huge thing moving forward. Some of the advanced telematics, when you pull up to the central fuel site, it'll grab your mileage right off the vehicle, so that we don't have operators putting in transpose numbers. That happens a lot with, and then we get skewed data.
The Big Brother thing is uncomfortable. However, it's not their car, and they're responsible to the people that hire them, which is the citizens that pay their money in taxes.
Absolutely.
And so, to set the rules, it's not unreasonable.
I agree. And you know, the technology, to a certain extent, has been around forever. My dad was in the trucking business many, many years ago, and they've had clocks in those semis that he reviewed every week. They know where you went, where you stopped, if you stopped somewhere and took a nap. I mean, that technology's been around for a long time.
Yeah.
And it works.
And people are finally starting to grab it, you know? And they're fairly reasonable priced, you know? A lot of them are, you know, $20 a month.
Right.
And that may seem like a lot when you start upfitting 600 assets, but the data that you can gather from that is pretty amazing. A lot of the newer vehicles, if they have what's called an OBD-2 sensor, that's where you plug in to scan the car, it'll actually, if the car's running bad, it'll send an email and say, the oxygen sensor needs replaced. I mean, they're just amazing what they can do with these things anymore. Another thing that, to reiterate on your comment, President Brown, is every vehicle in town has a City of Pocatello logo on it. And I think it behooves us to represent the city properly. You don't want somebody erratically driving through town, or tailgating, or stuff like that. Okay, next is budget development. We've talked to Joyce quite a bit about this. This is something, if we move forward, that'll probably be the next thing we're going to have to sink our teeth in, teeth into. Right now, it's probably looking more like Joyce and, and we have talked with Joyce, and it's probably looking more like an inter-transfer or an admin fee the first few years, because we're going to have to get some data to find out what our fully burden labor rate's going to be. With, after we get data for a couple of years, I think that's the direction we move, is you just start charging per hour per asset.
Just like a repair shop.
Exactly.
Then it builds to the budget, you know, to their operating.
And we would love to have that right off the go if this goes, but we just don't have enough data on what it takes to maintain X equipment. So, we just need to get a nice big data pool to go from there. What we talked about a little bit earlier is we'll implement a fleet advisory board. I think this is huge. I think departments want to be heard, and they should be heard. I mean, this totally affects their operations. It gives good buy-in. It allows the fleet department to be audited, and I think it creates some equality there. Okay, so here's where we start getting into some money savings. We've done a preliminary rightsizing analysis. This is very preliminary. We haven't met with any departments about it, but we just want to give you a scope of what can be accomplished. So, we use the fuel site data, and a benchmark standard nationwide is about 3,000, if you're going under 3,000 miles a year, or 300 gallons a year, that vehicle's considered underutilized. So we pooled up the fuel records from departments. You divide it by 300, or 3,000, whichever they're putting in their miles, or their hours, or their gallons. It spits out how many cars that department should have compared to what it should, what it does have. We've done that. Like I said, it's very preliminary, but what we've seen is there's approximately 66 underutilized vehicles. And these are just cars and light trucks. We didn't do any equipment. We didn't do any large trucks. Then we researched back, and we're averaging about $1,500 per vehicle at city auction. So, the auction of 66 vehicles, you got $100,000 just right there off the bat. One of the things that we would look forward, what we would like to do moving forward is, there is government online auctions. It's called GovDeals. If you take an auction to prime, if you take a street sweeper, let's just use that, to primetime auction, a normal guy that shows up's not going to want a big street sweeper. So you're kind of counting on Incom or McCammon or Blackfoot showing up. If they don't, you get a $10,000 asset, because it's got, it's got value, to maybe a paving contractor that wants a sweeper, and he buys it for $1,000. We've seen that a lot. You can take small vehicles and get a good price, but if you take a specialized vehicle to a public auction, you get pennies. And so, this GovDeals that we've talked with, you can submit this online. It's kind of like eBay. I mean, that's, as funny as that sounds. But as soon as that asset's sold, it no longer belongs to you, and the buyer takes all the liability. So, once they purchase that, they have to come and get it. If it's got a flat tire when they get here, they got to fix it. If it needs a battery, they got to fix it. The municipalities that we said, that we talked to, they're using it. They love it. They're getting way, way more money on their surplus. And so, I think that would be another great asset with the, or another great job for the procurement person, is then you could start working on these salvaged vehicles. Unfortunately for you, it may mean that we're coming to council four times a year, maybe, instead of just once for a big surplus, you know, to ask you this surplus stuff. So as you can see, there's, right there, there's a big one-time money savings. Now, we found a study from the city of Durham that shows that an underutilized vehicle usually burns between $500 to $1,000 worth of maintenance money throughout the year. You're either, it sits so long, then you put a battery in it. It sits out in the sun, the tires go bad, the windshield wipers go. So, they did a big, long study. They say it's $500 to $1,000 for an underutilized vehicle. If we were able to get rid of 66 underutilized vehicles, that's an ongoing savings of anywhere from $33,000 to $66,000. We also looked at putting City Hall as one central motor pool, because that kind of makes sense. Everybody's here. You have a bank of cars you check out. If we were to do that, we could actually get rid of 69 vehicles. The 69 vehicles is really good for us, because then that lowers our VEU ratio down to where we only need 13 mechanics. And so, now we have another additional savings, you know? We're definitely not saying we're firing mechanics, but through attrition or whatever, we may be able to not fill a mechanic's position, you know, for a potential $60,000 to $70,000 ongoing. Does that make sense?
This is the area where you're really going to have to have the mayor and council buy-in when you go to reduce those vehicles, I think. That's, you know, set whatever the standard is, because it'll be somewhat contentious.
Right. And that's what we've heard, sorry. That's what we've heard along, all along, is when you first start this, it's going to be a you first start this, it's going to be a battle, but as soon as, if you can show the facts and the data, the numbers don't lie, you know, that's when you start to win over. And then you have the buy-in with the fleet advisory board. And then there's also, you need to meet with each department individually because, for instance, a hazmat truck may only use 30 gallons a year, but you need it, when you need a hazmat truck, you need a hazmat truck. So there's certain things that just because it appears underutilized on paper, doesn't mean it is.
Two comments. One, if this goes beyond just the normal fleet, but gets into equipment operation, you'll probably be able to ascertain whether we should own the equipment or rent the equipment.
Absolutely.
That's another component. Second thing is, based on those numbers that were early, earlier presented on the different cities and the maintenance, what I'm seeing you project is that we might be even more efficient than, than they are because we have a record of that with this city.
Yeah.
And so there could be even more cost savings beyond the one mechanic. We might be able to actually turn stuff out faster.
Exactly.
For departments, get stuff back in use and stuff like that.
Right. And we'll actually address that. We tried to put a, a number of value to that, that's, it's very pie in the sky, it's, that's a hard one to get your head around, but it's a pretty neat little system that we've come up with to kind of show those opportunity costs or service level improvements that, that can happen through a better utilized fleet. I think for the first few years, we have a very old fleet, you know, capital's taken a beating the last few years. Um, I think our fleet average is 14 years old, you know? We want to try and have it seven to 10 years. You know, most equipment and vehicles, they have a lifespan of seven to 10 years. And so as we start to say again, this holistic approach to trying to get the whole age of this fleet up, then our maintenance costs go down. It's, it's good to get a free truck, you know, and, oh, we got a free truck, but if you're spending $10,000 a year to maintain it, um, that's what gets lost when we're not tracking it closely.
Absolutely. Well, getting rid of 60 vehicles or whatever is significant, will impact that as well. I mean, that's, that's pretty amazing when you think about it.
And something to say too, when we, when we do this, this rightsizing, it doesn't mean that everything below 3,000 miles goes. So like if a car has 1,200,000 miles or 1,200 miles, doesn't mean that one just goes. What it means is if another one's using 1,800 miles, then those two should combine to 3,000. So it doesn't just necessarily mean everything under that goes away, it just means maybe these two people need to share because X is using it for 1,000 miles and Y is using it for 1,000. Does that make sense?
Does your cost analysis include like insurance savings? Like if we're reducing 66 vehicles, they're ready to...
Yeah. We haven't got a chance to talk with Ruth yet about that. That's probably her expert to talk with on that and I can get you that information.
But you know, I'd just say, just say 500 bucks a, a vehicle just for your insurance. I don't know if that's right or not, but...
I know the city gets a really big group rate and so I don't, uh, we haven't looked at the, we, we've talked about that, we just haven't got a chance to, to dive into what the insurance impact is, but that's definitely something that's on our radar.
Where's the age group?
Any other questions on that? Okay, so we'll roll into some potential benefits. This is some of the stuff we talked about last time, just to give you a little reminder and to go into a little more depth. What we saw as we went around town is there's three or four different maintenance softwares that are being used by other departments. Each one of those costs money, each one of those have a yearly maintenance fee. Um, there's some efficiencies there by going to a centralized, um, not only is it more efficient on a maintenance aspect, it's, it just makes financial sense. An effective preventative maintenance program, I think that's going to be a huge key, um, to getting us moving forward. When you start looking at PMs, preventative maintenance, there's a tier one, a tier two and a tier three. A tier one preventative maintenance is your 29, $39 Jiffy Lube. They drunk, they drunk the oil, they put it back in and away you go. That's not the kind of preventative maintenance program we want to have. We want to have the stuff that says, um, this belt's frayed, so we're going to replace it so that when this guy's on the job, it doesn't go. You know, this dump truck's mud flaps only hanging by one bolt, so we're going to fix it now to save him coming back. You know, those are the little things that, that are going to add up to help start making this fleet more robust and more efficient. So that's, that's one thing we hear a lot is, is, um, the preventative maintenance. Well, I can go get my car serviced for $39. Well, you're getting $39 worth of service. The next potential benefits, if we decide to combine street and fleet, there's some money to be available if we sell our facility, if you decide you want to build one or buy a new facility, um, that's a big if. The potential benefits too, by getting the mechanics centrally located, they get to focus on mechanicking. They don't, they're not getting in the middle of a project and then get pulled off because they got to go run and pick up a dead cat from the middle of the road or pick up a, you know, a cardboard box that's pulling down Yellowstone because you can't find anybody else. And what that allows us to do is set performance measures that we can actually track. Then we can start tracking, what is your wrench turning time? How efficient are you? You spent, you were here for eight hours and you spent six and a half hours of that turn and wrench time, so you're X amount of product, you got that much productivity. And that's something that we get when we get these, this fleet management program. You have, you set up kiosks for the mechanics, which is, it sounds funny, but that's the way mechanics are nowadays. Most mechanics are, for most vehicles are computer controlled, the mechanic needs a computer. As they start an asset or they start working on an asset, they clock into that asset. If they need to go take lunch, they clock off that asset and that's just, as it's going, that's generating that, that work order for that vehicle. And so there isn't, oh, I was on it about three hours, you know? You know, if another vehicle comes in with a flat tire and you run over to change it, you may have just built that flat tire to the car you were working on because you didn't clock out. So a, a robust fleet management program's going to be key. Optimization, or optimized utilization of mechanics can lead to significant outside repairs. This really came to light with us, you know, we've had our snow removal program, just to, to give you an example, you know? In years past, if we get hammered and we have three or four trucks down at the same time, we have no choice but to send them out to get fixed because our mechanics are focused. The price difference on an outside repair to an inside repair is mind-boggling. Um, the amount of markup on parts is huge and that's something that we get into, we'll talk about a little bit, um, next, is trying to get this parts cost down. The other part of that is, most manufacturers offer a warranty on parts. When you install that, you, or when you install that part, you enter it into the fleet management software that you installed that part with that warranty attached. If you go to replace that part again, it pulls up that that's got a warranty and the manufacturer's going to replace it. I, I predict that we lose a lot of money in warranty work that, you know, you just forget, you know? You put an alternator on, it's lifetime warranted, two years later it goes out, you don't remember. And so, um, these fleet software programs, they remember for you and that's what's really nice. Um, so it leads into this economies of scales for parts budgeting. Um, we've met with NAPA Auto Parts, they're a very large chain throughout the United States. They work with IBS, which is a, kind of their liaison. They will actually come and construct a parts store in your facility and they will man it, they'll hire a parts person, um, they supply you with a, a software called TAMS. And what the TAMS does is it interfaces with your fleetware, your fleet management software. And so the mechanic can pull a car in and he says, oh, I need to replace the alternator. He puts on his work order, I need an alternator, he starts taking it off, he go, walks over the parts, it's already sitting there waiting for him. NAPA's big push is they want 85% on stock all the time. And so they, they stock only the parts that we need, um, for the city. They come and do an audit of all your equipment and they shoot for an 85% in stock all the time. We have spent a lot of money on freight, I mean, everything's in Salt Lake anymore, you know? Nobody likes to stock things, unfortunately, because it's a lot of money to hold that. But when we have a blizzard coming and I need a part for a plow, I got no choice. You know, I either drive down to Salt Lake or we're going overnight it because we have to keep running. Though what this is going to allow us to do is 85% of the time, that's going to be on hand and ready to go. Now, it does come with a price, you know, uh, you pay for the, the employee, um, you pay for the software and you pay a small amount for the, um, the inventory on, just to, to stock it. They gave us a quote, we don't have a lot of data because like we said, we don't have, we don't know what all the other departments' inventories are, but they're, they're looking at about $9,000 a month, um, to put the parts store in, in your facility. And then the good part about that, that sounds a little high, but that's the wage of the person, you know, and they got to, they got to cover that. The nice thing about dealing with NAPA is they're worldwide and so they're going to offer us prices at warehouse price, WD price plus 10%. And so when we buy parts as a department, we're paying warehouse plus 30%. And so because we're dealing with this big conglomerate, we not only have access to a bigger supply of parts, but we also are able to, uh, lower the cost because now we're considered a warehouse instead of, uh, you know, a jobber, is what they call it. So last year, we spent $460,000 just on parts citywide. 10%, there's 50,000. Uh, NAPA says they're pretty confident they can, they can wipe us by 50%, so, or 10%. Um, if you ever, I, I sign a lot of invoices for a lot of parts, um, it's interesting to see what the list price is and what we get it for. There is enormous markup in parts and so I think these could be a, a really good asset to have.
One other advantage too is like, say, say you need a part that they don't have in their parts store, they're going to go track that part down for you and they're going to get that part coming. So rather than having your mechanic spend his whole day phone, you know, on the phone trying to track that part down, your mechanic keeps working, the parts store's tracking that part, that part down for you and getting it coming and, and getting it there for the mechanic.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Plus the time it takes to process the invoices.
Yeah.
I process hundreds of invoices a month. He has to review and sign hundreds of invoices a month. All those invoices go to finance, that is one invoice, they send one invoice a month.
Yeah, they send you one invoice at the end. And it's been a nice thing is all of those are attached to the work order to that vehicle. So then, when we want to start looking at our fully burdened labor rates, we have all the data right there that we need to do it.
A couple of comments. One is that, uh, when you have to run to Salt Lake, you're probably not calling everybody else and saying, hey, I'm headed to Salt Lake, do you have a part? So when you have all of them looking, you might have two or three needs given that day that you need to go pick up, and one person can do that instead of three vehicles down and back.
Absolutely.
And, and then the NAPA, uh, I'm sure that they have a supply chain that's kind of the, faster than overnight. Uh, because, uh, long story short, I broke down a layout one time and we got the call in, in time and they were able to get the part there in about four hours. Uh, because, just the timing, but, uh, so I'm sure that that's part of, being part of the supply chain where you go individual source and they have to look it up. I just see economy scale, really jumping up.
Agreed. The other nice thing about NAPA is they're not just going to sell you NAPA parts. If they don't, like, let's say you're working on a Freightliner truck and you need brake drums, they're going to look at their brake drum supplier and if NAPA doesn't sell brake drums, they're going to go find brake drums wherever they can for you. And so like Jeff was saying, it just saves a ton of time because that guy does that for a living and he knows the chain and he knows who to call, he knows who those guys are. And to, to reiterate what you're saying, there's freight trucks running all the time and when you're in the business, then you know you can throw stuff on a freight truck and get it quick. So that's definitely a huge resource. The next big one is a capital improvement plan. I think we need to have a capital improvement plan citywide for all vehicles, um, so that everybody has a fair shake on getting decent equipment. I, I think that's, that's not too much to ask. And I think that's going to be the key to the success of this program because if we keep a 14-year-old fleet, we're never going to get ahead because we're just going to be throwing money at it. So we need to start working at finding efficiencies so that we can reinvest that money to get our fleet newer. Because once we have a newer fleet, it's going to, we're going to, our repair costs are going to drop. So, uh, just to reiterate again what we talked about, the rightsizing, the potential one-time savings and then the, the ongoing savings. Here's the one that's, it's kind of hard to digest, but we, we tried our best to, to show it. So these numbers are a little ambiguous because it's hard to put a price on opportunity costs or staff productivity. The, the national benchmark for downtime is about 5%. We don't, we haven't tracked, the departments don't track downtime, but I feel comfortable in saying we're not at 5%. I think we're, we're going to use a conservative measure of 10%. So if we want to bring that downtime to 5% to try and, and increase efficiencies, we take 2,080 hours in a year, we decrease it by 5%, it's 104 hours. You take 104 hours and you multiply it by your assets. Now, we have 600 rolling stock access, assets. Some of those we have spares for, some we don't. So we took 300, we took half of those assets because you may have an asset that you don't have a primary thing for. So that job stops until that primary piece of equipment is running again. So we use just an arbitrary number of 300 vehicles. That works out to 1,200 hours. You divide that by how many hours in the year, that equates to 15 full-time positions worth of downtime. You take that by an average salary of 50,000 bucks and you've got a three-quarters of a million dollars in, in staff productivity. Now, is that kind of a pie in the sky number? Absolutely. But it kind of gives us an idea of, of what we can accomplish by getting these efficiencies. The biggest thing it's going to do is it's going to create a better service level for the city as a whole because if, if I'm out trying to pave a road, my paver breaks down and I've already notified all these people and I got to wait till tomorrow, then I got to come back out, re-notify all of these people, they're upset because they parked three blocks away and walked. It just, it, it's just an all-around positive moving, you know, moving forward, so. Some of the potential impacts, larger facility means larger costs. That's one of the things that, when you get a bigger building, it costs a lot more money to, to run it. We don't know what the skill level of the mechanics are in the city. That's something that, um, as, as we pool them together, that's something that we'll have to work through. Teresa's done some research on ASE certified, certifying all mechanics. It's, it's incredibly cheap. You can get pretty much every mechanic ASE master certified for $7,000 for all of them. It's a, it's laborious, it's going to cost some hours. They've got manuals, but it's online testing, um, but it's, it's fairly low cost, uh, to get everybody ASE certified.
To throw in the downside, is there a chance that when we get everybody certified, they go work for somebody else?
There's always that opportunity, yeah. And that's, we fall into that same thing where, um, I'll use my, my world in the street department. We get a guy that knows how to, we train a guy how to run a big milling machine. You go work up on an interstate, you can make $500 an hour doing it, you know? And so that's kind of the risk we take unfortunately, but yeah, that's definitely a risk.
But we're going to provide a job year-round where that might just be...
Exactly. But a lot of times people see that big number and they run, so. But you're exactly right and I think that's where it, um, not to get too sidetracked, but that's where it ties in with our pay plan, you know? We make it advantageous for people to want to be here. Because if we invest a lot of money, and this is just not fleet, this is all departments, we invest a ton of money and a ton of time training these folks, we want to keep them here.
One, one thing you brought up in an earlier meeting that, that I haven't heard addressed today was the, uh, uniforming in tires.
Mm-hmm.
You know, being able to buy vehicles with uniformed tires and stuff like that. Would, uh, if we operate a fleet center, would we be doing more of the tire work ourselves, just buying the tires, coming in and mounting and stuff like that?
So, there's kind of two different philosophies there. And this kind of goes into what you call heavy mechanic work and light mechanic work. Uh, changing tires on a 10-wheel dump truck is young man, is tough, it's young man work. A lot of, there's been some studies of other municipalities that have, have studied the risk versus reward. If you can get an outside firm to change your tires for $25 and rotate them for 50, all it takes is one back claim of one of our guys straining their back and we could have paid for 10 years' worth of subbing that out. So it's, one of the steps we're going to look at moving forward if we go is what's our risk versus our reward? Um, I think small tires, absolutely. You know, you get tire machines, that's, that's, that's a no-brainer. When it comes to big tires, that's tough because, um, that's a tough game. And so we would just look at that, you know?
Well, but I think what you did, right now, I mean, we, we see on our financial report, the department's buying tires. I don't assume they're buying dump truck, you're, but not, you're not buying dump truck tires.
Yeah, we do.
So you're putting that on your P cards and stuff?
We have a line item in our budget for tires. So what we do is, it's called the WISKA contract, it's Northwest Consortium. Um, so the, the Northwest gets together and they go to Michelin, they go to Bridgestone, So the Northwest gets together and they go to Michelin, they go to Bridgestone, they say, what kind of a deal can you give us on tires? They, they put it out, it's kinda like the NGPA I was talking about earlier. And then we can go to Commercial Tire Jack's Tire, all the other tire stores in town and say, will you honor the WISKA price? And that's a price that's, you know, list minus 10, 20, whatever the percentage is. I talked to a Bridgestone rep, a big, big wig at Bridgestone, and I says, if we were to buy bulk, bulk tires, could you beat the WISKA? And he says, I could crush the WISKA price. And the WISKA price is good. I mean, you're buying tires for not quite half, but pretty close. And most of the departments, I, all the departments are doing that. So we're getting a good deal on tires. But it can be better.
Can be better, but again, so when, when you go change, have to replace tires on a dump truck, that's not being billed direct to the city, that goes on a P card.
So what we do is we pay for the tire and then we have Commercial Tire do our large fleet tires. And they just charge us for the service and we supply our own tire.
The upside would be, even if you've got somebody else doing it, it'd still be run through the system. Everybody wouldn't be doing their own thing, right?
Right. And that's where it ties in with the procurement person, if we get a procurement person. Now we start, that person's gonna start writing specs. And every dump truck, every water truck, every garbage truck, every back truck's gonna have 22.5 tires so that they all are the same tire. Every light-duty truck we get's gonna have the same tire. And so that's where we start seeing some more efficiencies.
So would we, anticipating downtime, would we stock those tires then instead of counting on them being available?
Absolutely.
Probably do now.
Yeah. Cause we would, we would, we would go and negotiate what the supplier did. How many do we gotta buy to get the best deal you can get? One of the downsides is, and this came to light, I don't know if you guys remember if you're, it's been a while back, but the Ford Explorers that kept rolling. What that brought to light is every tire's got a date code on it. And even if it's brand new, but it's over nine years old, the rubber's deteriorating and falling apart. So that's one of those that you gotta kinda play that close. Cause you don't wanna have too much stock to where it's sitting rotting basically on the shelf. That's where we would, yeah, we'd like to go is get a semi-truck full of tires and just load it up in a, in a big warehouse, so. Some of the other impacts is the logistics and the inconvenience. It is, if, you know, if, if truck breaks down, the guy comes in and has lunch, the mechanic's right there, he fixes it, he gets in and goes. If it's off-site, there's gonna be some inconvenience there and there's gonna be some logistics required. But I think that's all, all manageable.
But also would be recovery of a broken-down vehicle would be through the fleet rather than through the department, wouldn't it?
Exactly.
So you're not taking everybody away from their job.
Exactly. And that's like the, the whole key of this, that's a perfect example, is we're letting departments do what they're, they're good at. You know, let them, if, if, if I'm supposed to be paving streets, I want everybody paving streets, you know? I wanna, I want the guys that are good at what they're doing, doing that. So that's a great observation. The priorities, the priority of assets, we talked about that earlier, we covered it in the, in the policy, that was one of the big hurdles that people are concerned about. And then the overlap, mechanics doing other things, so. But I think that's stuff we can, we can work through. I think that's one thing to, to keep in mind is everybody we've talked to that's done this, they said it's gonna take a couple of years and there's gonna be growing pains, it's gonna be tough, it's gonna take three years probably. But everybody we've talked to said they would never go back. So it, it's not gonna be all roses and sunshine, it's gonna be, it's gonna be rough for a few years until all the kinks get worked out. So I think that's something that we need to know going into it, you know? It's gonna not be all sunshine. So the next step, this is where we kinda, we've kinda gotten to where we do or we don't, you know what I mean? So if we wanna move forward, our next step is, when we hit it, we go. We purchase or build a facility, we get these policies submitted to legal, get them adopted, we work with finance to develop a budget, we hire a fleet manager, that fleet manager, he can, he can begin a right sizing program, he can get a, research and purchase a fleet management software program, he can get the mechanic started trained, and then we develop a fleet advisory board and we take off.
Do you envision the fleet manager working for the street department head? Or do you envision this being a totally separate department and that person being a department?
I know Jeff and Heather have been working on an org chart for that and I don't really know where, where it's at, but they're working on that right now. So I think they could probably get with you and answer that better.
One comment. If, if you look at some of the resistance to this, putting the fleet manager under anybody that, that needs him would, would carry a tone of, who gets service first? Just an observation.
Exactly. And that's where the advisory board could offset that, if that's the direction that you choose to go.
But it's a fit and the fleet manager could do that and still do the job that you need the fleet manager to do, and you can have a fleet manager for $80,000 just get $120,000, then it's worth a look.
Exactly. And, and I think that makes perfect sense. And so I think that's where we need to just have a mindset of data, we gotta have a data-driven approach to this so that it's defendable, it's transparent, and it's equitable to all departments. Okay? Do you have any questions?
Do we have any real estate available out there?
We did.
Building.
Unfortunately, there's only one facility in the city right now that meets this criteria, and it's the Western States Catapult Building. The Lithia Building on Poline just came back on, on market. It's 1.29, I think, million. It's only 18,000 square feet, so it's already undersized just for fleet itself. The Western States Building is, the main building's 67,000 square feet, and then there's a 9,000 square foot outbuilding and another 2,000 square foot outbuilding, and they want 2.7 million. So it's, it's roughly $36 a square yard to, or square foot for that building.
And then how close is it to being able to go in and go to work there?
The, we went and looked at it the other day, the, the shop end is ready to go. I mean, Western States left probably $300,000 worth of equipment there. They left, how many cranes?
18.
18 overhead cranes. We, we estimated that a huge value of $200,000 in the cranes. They, I think there's two 10-ton cranes, there's a big carriage of cranes that go across. They left a 2,000-gallon oil, centralized oil tank, so you buy bulk oil and bulk hydraulic, and then it's pumped to each bay. They left that. There's an engine dynamometer there that we would absolutely never use, but I'm confident we could probably get $100,000 to sell that, that they just left. There is a plethora of perks there to make this work.
We just had a problem with the dewatering.
Yeah, we all remember the Kraft Road incident about the dewatering pad. Western States has a dewatering pad. We were looking at, at building a dewatering pad, it's probably gonna be about $50,000. Here's the hard part for us, the street department down on First, we own the building and the parking lot. We have four or five auxiliary lots across the street where we stage all of our equipment. We own none of them. When I first took over, it was looking rough, the fences were ugly, and so I started to research and say, you know, let's, let's start investing, make this nice. I started researching, the land actually doesn't belong to us. And there was lease agreements that never got re-upped throughout the years. So basically, we've been squatting for a long time.
Sweet.
Right. And, and so unfortunately, we don't even have a location to put a dewatering site unless we wanna make a large $50,000 investment on someone's property. And not to sound alarmish to get you up crazy, but our central fuel site, we have three 6,000-gallon tanks underground and we don't own the property. So our fuel site is on property we don't own.
So when you look at those issues, let's say that we threw a miracle today, we could buy a new building, sell the street department building and move you out there, what, you know, how complicated is it to fix the fuel site issue? Is that something you would live with for a while or has that gotta be done right now? Let's look at, you know, what are some of the downsides or the, the issues that gotta be resolved?
Okay. So some of the downsides there is, we've looked at the utilities are very high, very high. But we dug into that a little bit. Their garbage rate is through the roof, and I think it's because they were a dealer and they're moving a lot of boxes, pallets, they had roll-offs coming in and out there. So that's something that, it's a negative, but I think it's fixable. Their heating bills are through the roof. When you go over and look at, none of their doors are insulated, there's no weather strip. I think there's a lot of efficiencies that could be found there, but it is an expensive building to operate. The warehousing end of the building, there's a big portion that's warehoused, they left all of the pallet racking, all the shelves. There's probably $75,000 worth of pallet racking that they left. Where it starts to get difficult is probably the administrative end of the building. You know, it's got a showroom that would probably need to be converted into offices and reception areas, you know, conference rooms, stuff like that. So that's gonna be one of the big downsides. There's gonna be an upfront cost to do some remodel work on it. Another thing is we got up on the roof with them, one section of the roof needs replaced. They're aware of it. They just, they said about four years ago, they quit maintaining the building because they knew they were moving. One section of the roof, it has a few leaks, it's a tar and rock roof, which is not great. The rest of the facility is membrane roof, but the bid they got a couple of years ago was $65,000 to repair that section of the roof. There's two, there's a fuel site there. There's a 10,000-gallon diesel tank and a 6,000-gallon diesel tank, and there's pumps there that are monitored so they communicate. And so if this was to happen, we have our central fuel site on our fiber optic network so we can run that fuel site from the moon, we can go anywhere. So our, our tanks at the central fuel site are fiberglass, they have a 20-year warranty. After that, you know, you start wanting to do it. Well, we're at year 18 or 19. So it kinda, the planets are kinda lining up because we need to build a new fuel site within the next 10 years, I would say five to 10 years. There's, there's land over there for that, so.
Were they burning their waste oil out there for heating or?
Yes, and that's, that's a great point. They have a 2,000 gallon, a 2,000-gallon, very large used oil recycling. And then they have two oil-burning furnaces. We have an oil-burning furnace at our shop and it's, it's, takes some work to keep them running because it's dirty oil, you gotta clean the nozzles. When we talked to the maintenance guy over there, he said about 10 years ago, they, everybody was complaining about working on it, so they quit using them. So there's two almost brand-new oil burners that are just sitting there mothballed because they felt it was too much of a nuisance. And so I think we could revive those. We've got ours running like a Swiss watch.
But if you filter the oil properly, the used oil, it should reduce that nozzle.
Exactly. And that's what we've done at our facility, is we've made some changes to it, to where we purify the oil a little better. I mean, we're, we're pennies per square foot on our gas bill down there. I mean, we, at our shop, because we burn all of our waste stuff. But there is a large bulk tank there that could, that could handle all of the oil and then it could be burned.
So if you sell the street facility, this is gonna cost us $2 million?
They want 2.7, I believe, for that.
Plus?
It's, you're probably looking at a million dollars to upgrade it. I mean, that's probably a million dollars to upgrade it.
And then what do you think the management, do we have a number on what the management of that fleet and manpower's gonna cost?
Yeah, Jeff and Heather are working on that, they probably get you that information. I don't have that up here right now.
Come up with final numbers, Jeff.
But we're, we're, we're just toying with numbers right now of, we just set an arbitrary number of 12 to 15 offices. And then we're just, it's so hard to get any sort of quote, you know, without an architectural drawing because bearing laws and this and that and the other. So there's gonna be an initial investment. One thing that's very interesting is we've met with Western States and they are very willing to negotiate, is what they told us, so.
Well, I, I wanna try to figure out how to make this work.
I think it saves the city money and time and everything in the future, so.
If we take the heat on this initially, the next council can take the credit.
Let me take the heat on it.
There you go.
It's all yours.
You can take it for the next couple of months, is that what you said?
Gary wanted this as his last.
We toyed this in the senior center.
Could we, could we co-locate the senior center there?
Then if something goes, well, that's an idea, and then if something goes wrong in a couple of years, you could say, I can't believe he did that.
I didn't see your house.
No, I agree, Steve. I think you need to look at a number and, you know, come up with some kind of a number and see how we start getting there. I agree. Because there's probably never gonna be an opportunity like that particular building.
I agree.
Well, we just, we just had Western State, Western States build a building like that in town, it cost them $24 million to build.
And I've actually got some numbers if you're interested. I didn't know if we were gonna discuss real estate or not, but what we did is we took the last three structures that we've built in the city. The PRT facility, the animal shelter, and the water department shop, and then we, we costed it out. The highest was about $362 a square foot, the lowest was 150. So we went an average in the middle somewhere at $250 a square foot. To build that same square footage, you're looking at, I think it was $11 million to build it, so.
But to buy that and retrofit it?
Pennies.
For good three.
Well, yeah, before we, you know, I mean, we're talking prior to negotiations with Western States.
The other really appealing part too that I didn't mention is there's eight acres over there. We had the Kraft Road incident that we talked about. I foresee, it's right by the river. I would like to see us move away from there because we stockpile stuff there. I, it just, I think it's a red flag that I see, it's in the flood plain. This gives us an opportunity to get rid of, or to, to vacate that location.
So we need to start brainstorming and seeing what we need to do to come up with a number, right? Be next.
So Tom and Jeff or whoever, how, how many mechanics throughout the city do we presently have?
We, we have 14 mechanics.
Presently, 14?
Presently.
So we, right now, we're just presently, you're gonna transfer them all over to fleet?
That doesn't include WPC, the airport, or transit?
Yeah. We only, we only focused on the people that fuel at our location. Airport has an onsite, WPC has an onsite, and PRT has an onsite site.
Go over that again now, the 14 don't include?
They don't include the airport, WPC or transit.
Okay. But you need to start having that conversation as well, I think. I mean, right?
Yep. That's just the data we gathered, that's, that's the only, we're basically basing all of our data off the fuel site. So we can definitely dive into that. It gets kinda tricky when you start doing grant money and, you know, so that's just some stuff we'll have to work through. I think that's doable.
So a couple of comments, some of the, some of the fleet programs that we've looked at, they've actually had kind of a remote facility like, you know, like WPC or their airport or different things like that. And so, you know, that's not unheard of to have, you know, separate mechanics out at some of these different sites. And so, you know, we, we just have to look and see what made the most sense for us, but that's something to definitely consider. And then my other comment is, so we, we've looked at some different alternatives that we can use for this facility, and we don't have that information like right here or right now, but if you'd like, we could bring that into your, to your working lunch and maybe discuss that a little bit more if you, if you guys are interested in that.
WPC has its own mechanic base out there.
They do. I, I believe so.
WPC may, I mean, are they changing their own oil? So, I mean, okay.
Some of it, it kinda gets into logistics, is it work driving clear into town to change oil?
Right. But what's the biggest equipment that WPC has?
Probably their backdrugs.
Backdrugs?
Yeah, their shakers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Good job.
So do you want us to come to the working lunch with that?
We'll talk about it and we'll let you know.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Council, you ready for a break for a minute or two?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and take a few minutes for a break here and then we'll, we'll start again here. About 11 o'clock. Thank you for joining us after the break. We will go ahead and continue on with our agenda item number six is September budget amendments for fiscal year 2017. Representatives from the finance department will be present to provide information and explanations of proposed September budget amendments for fiscal year 2017. Joyce, how are you?
Good morning, mayor and council members. Joyce Stroshine, chief financial officer for the city, and with me I have Ashley Welsh, senior accountant. And today we're going to update you on the proposed September budget amendments. We have 19 listed amendments affecting nine funds. We published the public hearing notice on September 6th and September 13th according to the rules and law. And then today we're holding the study session to give explanation as to what these budget amendments are for. Next week on September 21st, we'll hold a public hearing. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll provide you with the ordinance for consideration and adoption. In the general fund, we are requesting $14,064 in proposed amendments. $3,764 are related to police travel and training. They're for the ICAD grant for resource officers, DRE conference, and assist in instructing DRE conference. So these are expenditures that are covered by these grants to the tune of $3,764. The Parks Creekside Bike Stop, we received a donation of $10,300. This was for the development of the bike stop. These funds initially are gonna be used to cover the water and sewer connections that will occur under the road and over there to provide the, the water access on that piece of property. And so this is the request for those expenditures related to it. In our other funds, we have amendments totaling $10,051,000. In the street fund, due to, due to the heavy winter, we had additional motor vehicle repairs of $30,000. There was a delay in the completion of the FEMA study, and so it didn't get completed until 2017, so that was for $45,000. We had the craft pond abatement, $40,000. And repair and maintenance supplies, additional supplies due to the, the winter time, $35,000. We received in, in our road and bridge fund, our road and bridge revenues, 189,000, or 189,000 in excess of what we budgeted. And so this 150,000 is gonna be used from that excess revenue source for the, for the year. Recreation fund, disc golf course up at the Mink Creek Center, we received a donation of $16,800 for the expenditures related to this. Municipal band concerts, $300, we received donations to facilitate the band concerts for the year. In the airport fund, terminal roof repair, $57,309. They're using their excess reserves in order to complete this needed repair. Overtime from winter ops, they had some excess overtime, so they also had excess reserves that they could use for that purpose, $8,500. Science and environment fund, stormwater model agreement, back in February, I believe it was, Hannah brought to you, an enhanced agreement or modified agreement. This is the additional $40,000 they need to complete that, that agreement. Ambulance fund, overtime for call volume and transports. This, this particular expenditure for overtime is covered by the Bennett County ambulance district fund, and they have agreed to pay an additional $50,000 on the contract to cover that overtime.
An additional over what was budgeted?
Right. So there, so this amendment allows for the expenditure, they've already agreed, I've already spoken with Kristy Clauser, and, and they approved that through the adoption of their processes to expend an additional $50,000 and, and send us $50,000 in excess of the contract that's already.
So this is a pass-through based on?
It is.
What they've agreed.
It's not a direct cost.
It's a pass-through, but it's an additional $50,000 in overtime.
Yes.
So do we have a number of our total overtime numbers for the?
I, I don't have it, but I could, I could get it for you and, and let you know.
Bring it down to EMS and fire.
Okay, in the water debt service fund, as you remember, we agreed to refinance the debt. And so these entries that I have to do is related to moving the old debt off and putting the new debt on. And, and so I have to pay down the existing debt, which was the $6,155,000. We have some interest off of the old debt that we have to pay, $109,591. And then we had bond costs related to the refinancing of $54,500. In the end, what we're going to see over the course of the remaining years of repayment of this debt, we're gonna save about $178,000 in interest or, interest expense. And so you're gonna see that as we move through. You don't see that initially when you do the refinancing. Street special projects, local road Northgate project, this was to move the $500,000 that we had dedicated for the Northgate project and possibly receive in $300,000 from the county for their portion this year. This is just a possibility in, as we move forward with the Northgate project. And so that's the proposal there. Airport construction fund, in 2016, they had their large grant year. And due to circumstances, not all their projects were completed in 2016, but they're being completed now. And so they're requiring an amendment to expend the grant monies that have come in in, in 2017 for the expenditures related to those projects of $2,609,000.
Joyce?
Yes?
Back to the Northgate project.
Right.
Why, what we're supposed to do then, do we, should we go, do we need to go back and make an amendment to an agenda separate from this on this Northgate project? Because, because we, we authorize spending up $500,000.
Right. And, and what this is, we, what we were talking about doing, and I know this is still kind of a moving project a little bit. But we were going to account for it within the city because this, we were gonna own the contracts and we were gonna process everything through. And so this is just an amendment to move the monies partly so that when I move the monies from the street fund into Fund 71?
Right.
That I have the ability to expend it. That's with the $500,000. Then if the county who had dedicated $300,000 in 2017, if they sent monies to us for us to meet an expenditure, I need the authority to be able to expend. And that's what the other remaining $300,000 is.
Then when this comes before us, could we break those two numbers out so that you have the $500,000 and the $300 from the county so that there's?
I, I can explain it that way when I present the amendment. The, the authority line is a single line, so that's the reason why it's collapsed into two. But I can describe it that way.
Well, the reason for saying it's just, I, I don't want anybody.
To think that we're spending $800,000?
Not doing their due diligence and say, "Well, okay, you guys said 500, now it's 800."
I can, when we, when I present it at the public hearing, I'll make that very clear as to the distinction between the two parts.
Thank you, Joyce.
Okay. Okay, so the totals by fund, I won't read through all those, you can see them, but the total amount is $10,065,064. And, and just a reminder, that water debt service fund, a lot of that is just the payoff of the old debt and, and new debt is coming on. And so it's using the refinancing dollars to remove the old debt.
Is that the water bonds?
Yes. So after we hold the public hearing next week on Thursday on September 21st, you will not take any action after the public hearing, but at the end of the meeting, we will present the ordinance to you for consideration. And that will conclude the budget amendments. Any questions?
Questions, council?
No.
Looks good.
Okay.
Thank you, Joyce. Then we'll move on to agenda item number seven, proposed city of Pocatello financial policies. Representatives from the financial depart, finance department will be present to provide information regarding the proposed financial policies for the city of Pocatello. The policies will be placed into resolution form for a consideration at a future meeting.
Okay. The financial management policies, before we begin, I wanna give a lot of credit to Ashley. She's the one that did a lot of the roadwork on this. When we started talking about developing a set of guidelines to guide us through our financial management, I had her do research both with GFLOA and with various cities around the state to see what they had done with financial policies and to, and to kinda use those as a, as a guide as to what had been accepted and proposed throughout various cities in the state of Idaho. So I just want you to realize that she put a lot of work into this. So the purpose of it is the city of Pocatello assumes an important responsibility to its citizens, to carefully account for public funds, to manage city finances wisely, and to plan for the adequate funding of services desired by the public. The city's financial policies establish the framework for overall financial planning and management. So the guidelines help to guide us both in current activities and long-range planning. I just attended a three-day conference on budget and GFLOA presented, and this is the beginning step to becoming more effective and efficient in how you manage your funds. Doesn't mean you can't have an exception to a policy, but it gives you the basic roadwork of how I'm gonna, how I'm gonna make decisions on a regular basis. And so it makes it, you're able to make decisions in a quick manner and in an efficient manner and be consistent throughout. So there are nine sections to the policy. We have accounting, auditing, and financial reporting, budget and long-range financial planning, revenues, expenditures, fund balance and reserves, capital expenditures and improvements, debt, cash management and investments, grants, and intergovernmental revenues. So in the first section, accounting, auditing, and financial reporting, what we basically tell everybody is that we follow generally accepted accounting principles as, as part of our accounting practice. And we also follow the governmental accounting standards, board standards, who provide us with the rules, accounting rules for which we base our transactions and how we present transactions in accounting and in reporting. In the financial management reporting side, we acknowledge that we provide a monthly budget-to-actual report on a monthly basis so we can show how everybody's executing on a regular, in a consistent manner. The only difficult, difficulty I will always comment on, on budget-to-actuals is when you look at revenues. We're pretty consistent on a 12 to 12 for most expenditures. There are some that will be, I only have it every six months. I'm gonna talk about ICREM there. But on the revenue side, your revenue stream can be a 12 to 12, or it could be property tax major remittance that comes in in January and comes in again in July. So when you're looking at those reports, you have to really be aware of the depart, the department or the fund that you're looking at and how the revenue stream comes in for it to be a really good understanding. And I try to provide training on that so that people understand what they're looking at. We also facilitate and hire an external auditor for our annual audit. And compliance and review, part of our agreement in these policies is that we will annually review our policies that we are complying with them. And if we see any issues with, the world has changed a bit and we need to modify a policy, then we would bring that before you. And I, again, note that exceptions can be appropriate and required depending on the particular issue. But those should also be provided to you and adopted by you. Okay? Budget and long-range financial planning. If you all didn't know what a balanced budget is, I'm gonna give you the definition in a formula. It's revenues plus excess fund balance equals expenditures. That's what a balanced budget means from an accounting point of view. Level of budget adoption, we adopt our budgets based on the fund and the department. Now, I'm gonna talk about something else in a minute, so keep that thought in mind. Current funding basis, we try to make sure that we are using recurring revenues to recurring expenditures. There's a real problem if you use non-recurring revenues for reoccurring expenditures because you eventually find out you don't have any revenues to meet your, your demand on expenditure. So on that, we have a policy that we say one-time revenues should be used for non-recurring expenditures capital. They use capital because that's an easy one to say, but, but let's say for instance, during the year you had some non-recurring revenues and you'd made a decision that you're going to expand a department, you wanna hire two people to do that. You have the non-recurring revenues because the budget is already in process, shall we say. You can make the commitment, it would be a dual commitment, to use those revenues for that purpose for this one time and that you are going to budget and use those revenues in, or use revenues, a revenue source to come in to meet that reoccurring expenditure. That's kind of an exception, doesn't happen very often, but I'm just saying that would be an exception to a rule that you could make that donate, or decision to, to use funds that will not be there again next year because you're really committing to either taking more tax or there's another revenue source coming in that you would use for that purpose. Revenue estimates for budgeting, we try to start with a conservative, objective, and analytical approach. We also take into consideration cost recovery on our, is it fee versus tax. We seek grants, budget-only for awarded grants, and we adopt a rate study every five years for our utility rates. Budget preparation, department heads develop their budget. There are competing requests, but that's reviewed during the annual budget process. That's why we don't allow them to put their requests into the budget. They have to present. You have to look at what everybody's asking and say, "Okay, I'm okay with that." You, you get to put that into your budget plan. Budget management is handled by the CEO and the CFO, and that's after the budget's been adopted. So as we're rolling through the year, if issues come up, then those are usually presented to myself and to the mayor for consideration and, and decision. Now, that doesn't mean we can give additional authority, it just means if someone has something budgeted in, let's say office supplies, and they need it in operating supplies, can we make the move and make it down there? Yes. That, that's the authority you're giving. And I'll, I'll discuss that more in just a bit. Legal adoption is at the fund level. Now, this is important. When GFLOA reviews our CAFR and we do the budget-to-actual reports, they need to know what is the legal level of adoption, which is different than the level of budget adoption. So just remember, there's a distinction between the two. Amended budget, there's two things that, you can amend for two reasons. I can make a budget adjustment, which is different than a budget amendment, and that's to move authority between account lines within a fund. Counsel doesn't, it doesn't have to be, be brought before counsel for that particular purpose. That's more of a management tool. But if they need additional authority, then that is a required budget amendment and must be brought before counsel. You have to hold a public hearing, you have to publish twice. All the things that we just talked about have to occur on a budget amendment. Performance management, that's where we try to report on trends and comparisons. We try to develop that information, departments do as well. What's new is we're gonna start working on long-range financial plans, trying to forecast what we think is gonna happen in a five-year period for the major operating funds. Revenues, balance and diversification and revenue streams, so we try to protect the city from fluctuations. User fees, tax funds, this is where, in the last couple of years, we've talked a lot about cost recovery. So if an individual is getting a bigger benefit for a service we're providing versus the community as a whole, we believe that person should pay a larger fee or a larger portion of the cost. And taxes should be a smaller portion. And that's what that is discussing there. This should be reviewed annually, and we should also be monitoring, making sure we have resident versus non-resident fees. Because especially in, in expenditures that are related to a service where you're allowing non-residents in, they're not paying the tax. So that means your tax dollars are going to support a larger group than what you really intended. And that's the reason why you have to. User fees, enterprise funds, we do have resident versus non-resident fees, and of course we have the, the rate study, which is a five-year financial plan. User fees are adopted by fee resolution annually. One-time unpredictable, unpredictable revenue sources, we use those for non-recurring expenditures. Revenue collection, high collection rate by monitoring receivables. We follow consistent, aggressive approach, but within reason on delinquent accounts. That's, that's the philosophy. On write-off of uncollectible receivables, utility billing passed to accounts are sent three letters before sending to the collection agency. Counts receivable accounts are sent a letter before sending to the collection agency. But the important part of this is to remember that write-offs do not release the debtor from their obligation. It just means we've sent it to collection in the financial reporting. We're saying, we're not counting on those revenues to come in. That's all that really means. Okay. Expenditures, maintenance of capital assets. The city shall maintain capital assets and infrastructure at sufficient levels to protect the city's investment and to maintain service levels. Periodic program service reviews, the CFO and department heads shall undertake periodic reviews of the city's programs and services for both efficiency and effectiveness, but this is always by the direction of the mayor and the council. Purchasing, all city purchases of goods and service will be in accordance with the city's current purchasing policy. Fund balance and reserves, as you remember, we've already adopted a reserve policy, so that kinda feeds into this already, so we're just kinda going over and, and giving you some more explanation on it. Fund balance and working capital, we have to follow and maintain that in accordance with the reserve policy. Use of fund balance or working capital, you have, can only use for emergencies or non-recurring expenditures or major capital expenses. Fund balance classification, now this is one that you may or may not be aware of. Non-spendable, do you know what a non-spendable reserve balance is? It's, it's part of your balance sheet that says you have inventory. It's part of your balance sheet that says you have inventory, or you have fixed assets. Those are not liquid, so they are not spendable, okay? That's what it's referring to. Restricted. There are a lot of monies that come into the city, street fund, library fund, that have what we call restricted revenues. They have to be used for a very specific purpose. You can't use them for other reasons. That's what restricted, and it's always by an external source. Committed. Through a formal adoption by the council, you can adopt and say, "These funds are committed for a purpose." In effect, kind of what you've done with the North Gate, the $500,000 for the North Gate, that's a committed purpose, okay? Assigned. Based on a fund, if we have an adopted budget, that's more of an assigned balance. We've assigned it based on the purpose of the fund, okay? But there's not a formal adoption that these dollars are going to be used for just this purpose, okay? It's kind of a step above, and probably you don't care to that level, but it exists, and we have to care because Dorian cares. Unassigned. Your general fund is the unassigned fund balance, and that is because they can use their monies in any department or for any purpose. Commitment of fund balance. This is getting back to that. It takes a formal action, has to be completed by the council in an adopted ordinance. Order of expenditure. We believe that when we go to use funds, they come out of the fund balance in this order. We use restricted first, committed, assigned, then unassigned. Capital expenditures and improvements. So our threshold individual cost for capitalization is $25,000. It also has to meet the idea that the expected life of the asset exceeds a year. Donated assets are recorded at fair market value. Normal maintenance does not, if it doesn't add to the value of the asset or materially extend its life, it is an expense and not an addition to the asset value. Five-year capital plan. This is the new thing. We are going to be working towards developing for next year's budget season, a five-year capital plan with departments, so that you know that these are the things they deem to be needed or important to continue their service level. What we're going to do in this year's budget report is we're going to show you what decisions were made within the budget and isolate all those capital expenditures so you can get an idea of what we're currently doing, so that as we roll into this and we start to build this product, that it will have some meaning. You know, it's not just a cutoff. You'll have a little pass there. It just won't be a five-year pass. The CFO is responsible for recommending a capital improvement plan to the council through the budget process. The capital improvement plan will be adopted with the annual budget. During the budget process and at year-end, projects will be reviewed. At the close of the project, remaining funds will be moved to capital acquisition fund so that they, since they were targeted for capital needs, we don't want them to be used and just kind of blend it in and use for operations. They stay as capital. Funds can be appropriated for new projects in the new cycle, and bond funds can only be used in accordance with a legal identified use. Appropriation for capital projects are for the fiscal year, so sometimes people have a difficult time with this. Once, you have to appropriate each year. Let's use the airport construction. They appropriated for their capital construction. It didn't fall through, so you have to reappropriate for the next year because appropriation does not automatically carry forward. And then remaining authority in the capital lines will be transferred to the capital acquisition fund. This is new, and this is kind of important. It kind of holds us to whatever we decided we wanted to spend for capital and move it to a place so that it gets isolated for that purpose and for that particular department. And we're already doing some of this already. This formalizes it and makes it not a choice. They have to. And I thought, you know, Tom's presentation, he just, I thought it was a great segue on our five-year capital plan. Capital expenditures and improvement. Infrastructure evaluation, replacement, rehab. This is to focus on ensuring the infrastructure is replaced as necessary to protect the capital improvement investment and to minimize future replacement and maintenance costs and to maintain existing levels of service. I think Tom and I are on the same page right now. Replacement of capital assets. Schedule of replacement for the replacement of fleet, fire trucks, high-technology capital assets, and the funding options will be reviewed. Capital expenditure financing. Financing can be from current revenues, fund balance, or debt financing. Pay-as-you-go capital improvements. Cash versus debt to minimize impact to utility and property tax rates. And we always try to seek grants to provide funding to kind of maximize what the city's portion, how much we can do with the funds that we have available. Capital projects and improvement reporting. Summary status reports will be prepared on a monthly basis, available to the CFO, mayor, and council. And this is for projects that are totaling $100,000 or more. And I'm not just talking projects here. I'm also talking, because when you think of, I'm purchasing a truck, anything on the capital plan will be important information to know that that was planned and it was executed, so that you know that things are rolling through. And the other thing I will make a comment, when we provide a five-year capital plan, you know, it's always going to be contingent on what your revenue sources are. We're making estimates. This is what we think we need to continue service level. That, it's a forecast and a plan. It's not a, "I have to because I adopted it," right? I need you to understand that distinction because that helps to facilitate us to put a plan together, knowing that you still have flexibility. It's not a permanent thing.
Joyce, I don't know if I'm tracking the outline with the narrative that's at the end.
Okay.
You have capital improvement projects totaling $100,000 or more.
Uh-huh.
In the paragraph that says capital improvement project reporting, it doesn't mention $100,000, isn't it?
Okay. Are you talking about the line above it?
Well, I'm looking at capital improvement project reporting in the narrative, the policy itself.
Okay. So up above in number one, under B, it says that a capital improvement project should generally exceed a cost of $100,000. So it's listed up there. And then the reporting is a little bit farther down. I think that might be what you're, so it's on page eight of the policy.
Okay, I'm way ahead there.
Okay. So up there, it states that they should exceed a cost of $100,000, and so we're going to be reporting on those capital improvement projects. So I think, it doesn't actually list it there, but it lists it up above.
Okay. I was just looking for congruity.
That's all right. That's why I have her with me, too, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of little detail like that that's within it. But I think that the main thing is that we're going to start paying attention to the capital side. That's what this policy is about. Since we haven't done this before, this is a product to start us moving forward. We'll adjust as we see what needs to be working. Right now, on capital projects, I have Haley monitoring those projects, and so all we're going to do now is kind of formalize and maybe make it a requirement. And so then we produce a report so that you have information about what's happening.
Joyce, is there, I haven't read all that, all the policy yet.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything in there? Is there any way we can put in there that we audit a project?
Well, in a sense, by creating the capital plan and having the monitoring that I already have, you're doing. That you're doing that to an extent. I don't know, I don't know how in-depth. You can have a surface audit, and then you, you kind of went into details on some things that made it sound a little more in-depth, so I'm not going to say that this is going to answer your question.
Well, it'd be nice to have a final audit report from you of where we were, you know, how much over-budget or under-budget the project went. On the actual construction side, I think Public Works should do an audit of what went well and what didn't go well.
Sure.
And so we learn, we find out, you know, where we can improve the process as we go, just like this, we got, you know, we're moving to get a five-year plan, okay? The beauty of that is, is one, we got a plan. Two, we are monitoring things as we go, and we understand it's in flux based on revenues. But on the construction side, and that, this will have to be discussed with Public Works, is we need to really know what went well on a project or what didn't, so that the next time we have a project that's similar, what we can, we can improve on that.
I would agree with that, and I don't think.
I mean, this is a huge step on the financial, you did a great job because we're making huge strides here.
Well, and I think as, I don't disagree. I think that's all important, because anytime you're doing anything, if you don't look back, reassess to know what did go well and what didn't go well, it's very difficult to make improvements going forward. And so formalizing that, I don't think should be a big jump or a big leap. I think we probably already do it informally in a sense. Do you see what I'm getting at? But putting it formalized actually gives it a little more power.
Absolutely.
And it says on there that the report that we're going to start preparing includes a budget-to-actual for each project, a list of major contracts, expense to date, and percent of completion. So it kind of gives you an idea of where they're at so far. And then, you know, if Public Works or whoever's doing the project wants to comment on it, then they could have that opportunity with that report.
Because you're doing with this now on a project like you're doing with the budget that you send out to us that, at this time, we're three-quarters of the year and we're, these funds are a certain percentage.
Our best example of what we're already doing that relates to this was the Phosphorus Project. We had each contract and how much was expended, or how much was proposed to be expended based on the adopted contract, and then how much was, that came in from the bond.
Right.
And tracking, how are we meeting within the expectation? And Haley does a great job of monitoring that and letting Jeff and John know if there's any concerns along the way. And so I think that is what you're driving at.
Yeah.
All we're going to do is try to formalize that process. Yes, because if I have an issue with a particular contractor, I kind of want to know that, don't I? As in going forward, because things didn't work so well with that particular contractor.
Yes. If the state gave us a leeway.
Okay, and debt. And then I try to move right along here. I think we're getting close. What page are we on, 10?
Yeah.
Okay. Use of debt financing. So what can you use? You have general obligation debt, revenue bonds, lease purchase agreements, and then other instruments allowed under Idaho law. Affordability. Of course, you're always going to do analysis to determine the feasibility and the impact on future budgets if I go into debt. Types of long-term debt, general obligation bond, revenue bonds. Debt structures. Bonds will not exceed 30 years. No balloon bond payments. I'm going to make a note that I'm talking bond payments. When I'm talking operating leases, we tend to use balloon payments because we don't intend to keep the asset, okay? Interest is paid in the first fiscal year after issuance. We follow the Idaho Code on legal debt margin, and we are well under our legal debt margin, so that's not an issue for the city. Debt refunding. The market will be monitored to take advantage of debt refinancing for potential savings. The sell process, you have to use a competitive bid process in the sell of bonds. Usually, we have bond counsel and we have advisors that assist us through that process. That's not usually an issue for the city, unless nature of issuance requires a negotiated sale. Bond ratings. Full disclosure of operations will be maintained for credit ratings. Covenant compliance. The city will comply with all covenants stated in the bond ordinance. Arbitrage, rebate, monitoring, and report. This function is outsourced, but we do comply with it. And if you're not remembering what arbitrage rebate is, it's when you borrow money on a bond, and usually you have up to three years to expend those monies. In the process, you're holding the monies in the account until your construction process completes, so you're earning monies on those bond monies. The money you earn cannot be greater than the money you're expending in the interest payments. If it is greater, then you have to pay a rebate back to the IRS. We haven't been in that. I don't think the city's ever had that situation. I'd have to look back and research, but not in my course of years. Lease purchase agreements will be used for the acquisition of equipment when it is cost-effective. Cash management investments. Now, we do have an investment policy, so a lot of these are just kind of reiterating things that we are already doing. We also note that within the investment management, that we have to stay in compliance with local, state, and federal regulations and follow the city's investment policy. Our primary goal is to ensure safety and integrity and liquidity of the financial assets of the city. Let's see. Arbitrage investments. Investment of bond proceeds with safety of principal and liquidity in mind, and of course, any positive arbitrage earnings will be remitted to the IRS. Depository. The city will seek its bank through a formal bidding process. Per state code, the city will strive to bid their depository services every five years and no later than every seven years. This is a major event when we go to do this, so.
Joyce, just one question. So are credit unions allowed to submit bids for this, or are they banned?
I believe they are, but I believe they're not large enough to handle the services that we have need for. I'm thinking of two smaller banks that always bid, and there's usually issues. Usually, the one that usually hurts the smaller entities is positive pay. That's something we require, and that's a service not all of them can provide to us. So, just for an example, we open it up. I don't remember seeing anything distinctly against credit unions, did you?
Okay. Good. Sure.
Yeah. Well, it's just, it's just what it's been.
Yeah.
And I can't remember in the RFPs that I've seen any credit unions even apply for it.
Okay.
The other thing to keep in mind on this is, we also have, there's three things that we will go out for, for bidding. Merchant services and RP card services. So there's three things that we have to do that are major changes in what I call the cash management and investments. Grants. This is our last slide on our policies. Grant guidelines. We apply for grants that meet the objectives of the mayor and council. We process so that, these grants so that they will leverage our city funds. Ongoing costs will be evaluated in applying for grants. Grants pre-application process. Grants pursued and use and purpose has to be documented. The city's objectives that will be achieved with the grant. In other words, we're asking for information for anybody in the city who's applying for a grant so that we in the finance department know about it. And also what they plan to do for local match required or the source of the match. Increased costs to be funded upon termination of grant. A big issue that you have, I'm going to use the cops more because that was a good example. The condition on that one is, once you applied for it and you were awarded and you were able to hire two new officers, the condition was that you weren't going to decrease your staffing levels for a time period afterwards. So when we're looking at these grants, we really have to look at what is the impact to the budget, not only now, but potentially in the future, if events change in the city where that would become not a positive for you. So that's something that you always have to keep in mind with grants. Grant termination or reduced grant funding. Event of reduced grant funding sources will be substituted only after all program priorities and alternatives are considered. And unless the city is obligated by the grant to maintain the service, then we would consider terminating the grant-funded programs when grant funds are no longer available, or the program no longer supports the city's goals. Because technically, if a grant goes away, and you say it's an important goal, then you're going to have to come up with a funding source to maintain that service. Otherwise, the grant should go away. And that is all the policies.
That was almost like a legal description, but not quite.
How we appreciate.
Don't we appreciate, Ashley?
I need to say this very delicately. How we appreciate, I don't know if I can say this delicately, the financial nerds.
Thank you. I got, I.
I just, I mean, I mean.
The people who invest their time and energy into finance.
And that we find it exciting, and yes, I know.
Well, and the overall importance of formalized policy, so there's no question, so it's transparent. I mean, I know that that's important, yet it glazes over sometimes. But. I mean, I know that that's important, yet it glazes over sometimes. But thank you for being our financial nerds.
You're welcome.
And I say that with the highest esteem.
I take that as a compliment.
They do.
Thank you.
The other thing I would note that I didn't comment on is adopting financial policies like this and putting them in into a formalized process helps with your credit rating. It helps with everything that we do. I'm just saying, they look at this. This is one of the chief criteria that you have to have in order for us to submit a distinguished budget is having formalized policies.
So we have distinguished budgets?
Well, we are working towards one. Ashley has been putting a lot of effort into working towards. You know, we produced this book and this, I'm not saying this book isn't important, but it doesn't tell you a lot. You have to read through the numbers. You actually know what the numbers all mean. What she's working on is taking all these numbers and putting it into, I'm going to call it a story, about how the city is functioning, what they're doing, what their plans are, what's the impact, what are the concerns? And so that when you look at it and you read it, it tells you more than just looking at everybody's adopted.
Yes, budget for dummies. Thank you.
Now, I didn't say that.
But it's also nice flying with on the plane with you coming back.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, that's where I was coming from, was the budget, the budget classes. So but yes, I think it's good and I appreciate that. I appreciate the support. I know. I appreciate Ashley for all the work she's done because this is a big move for us. And I think it, I think in the end, it's just going to help facilitate the momentum that we're already beginning on in our budget process and just how we're doing things financially.
Well, see, the pants type of.
That would be those financial nerds.
Thank you very much. With that, we will go into another break for, we've got a Northgate Interchange Public Kickoff that will be happening at 1:00, after which we'll come back from that and we'll finish our study session agenda and then move into an executive session. So, thank you very much. Good afternoon and thank you for joining us after our break that we've had there. We had a lunch and a Northgate Interchange Public Kickoff announcement. And so it was pretty exciting stuff. But we'll go ahead and get started again with our agenda item number eight, Banner Development Corporation update. John Raggett's Banner Development Corporation Executive Director will be present to give council an update on their activities and achievements.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, council people. That was fun, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yep, that was okay. And nice and cool. So thanks for giving me some more time to give you an update on some of the things we do. We appreciate your support and the activities that you participated and collaborated with us on in the past. We usually have at least two members of the council, this group, on our board, sometimes three. I think last year or two years ago, I think Councilman Moore and Mayor Blatt and Councilman Cooper were actually on our board. So that helps to facilitate communication between our group and this body, as well as provide some opportunities for collaboration and feedback. So once again, we thank you for your support financially and collaboratively. Get right into an update on some of our activities. As we talked to you about before, we do some trade shows. The SHOT Show we reported on and, you know, we indicate the number of flash drives that we usually had handout. We supplied you with some of those at the last meeting. So anyways, we're still working with a couple of the leads from the SHOT Show. One of them is a sole proprietorship, family-owned company, fabrication company, and very eager to get out of California, come here and meet with us. But sole proprietors have a problem when they're pregnant, about to deliver, and that usually cuts down on the site visits. So I think after we have, you know, three months under the, under our belt with the newborn, maybe we can get them out here and take a look. Site Selectors Guild, had a couple good contacts there. They haven't panned out as yet. We did a full court press on marketing. The Farmers Insurance Building as well as the Adult Education Building for ISU, they vacated that space. So those were our big push at that event.
Allen Redcare?
Pardon? Yes, sir. Wrong site. Other side of the building. So and both would be very, very good for the types of operations that we had at Farmers. The market seems to be using a different model now. I mean, these mega 3,000-person centers, but those go in cycles. And so different companies sometimes are different as the cycle. They start out smaller regional offices and then they consolidate 10 years later. So Live Exchange, we just were at this summer, had a really good show there. We had four good contacts. We're still dealing with a couple of the contacts there, the leads that we got there. We'll report on those in the executive session. But that was, that was a good show and it's always very cost effective. So we like that. And so we're kind of wondering what we're going to do since it's going to move to Denver next year. So we'll have to take a look and see what that's going to shape up to be evaluated. Live Exchange, we actually had about four really good contacts there. A couple of them were actual projects. One of those projects is working with us right now to supply logistics support to some of our regional companies and provide some other services. So we're working with some of those companies here locally and we're pretty excited about the potential for that. Select USA, we did in support of Idaho Commerce, Ready, Seadoo, Idaho Power, and Nampa. Rob gave out 30 flash drives. The mayor and Mike Ennis attended that as well. And so it really is a good show for Idaho. I mean, the governor or the lieutenant governor attends and they usually get a lot of contacts. And, you know, we're trying to set up as many sessions as possible and hopefully they execute and make the meetings, the contacts that we've made. So I don't know if the mayor has any commentary on that at all or.
Just a good show that you have the foreign investment that's looking. And so it's a good show to be too. You do get your name out there, so.
Yeah. It's totally based on foreign companies that come into the United States and they come to this to look for sites, look for communities that they can locate into. A lot of them are driven by, you know, where can we find the best sales for the company? And it would be logical they'd want to locate their site there. So to kind of wrap up our activities for the year to date, we've had 29 direct responses and we've had seven responses from Commerce and then one combination, direct, ready contact that we can touch on in the executive session as well. Comparing that to 2016, we're already pretty much caught up and ready to go buy what we had done last year. So some of the marketing that we're going to embark on now, direct marketing for advanced manufacturing, high-tech insurance and finance companies, minerals and mining production, basically the strong clusters that we have here is what we're looking at. And we have a couple others as well. And we've got a good bargain on a database. And so we'll, we'll target those, those clusters and we'll direct market to them with the help of our interns and volunteers. So that is a good, a good approach to trying to get to direct companies, pitch our strengths to their particular clusters and see if they aren't interested or in an expansion mode for location somewheres. Retention and expansion, of course, is cranked up again. We're past the bulk of our trade shows, all of them actually. And so we're getting out and visiting with companies to see what capacity issues they have, if they're expanding, if they need more labor. You know, a couple of years ago, we bumped into our welding companies and lo and behold, at one point, we were counting 500 jobs in the offing. And so Department of Labor, as well as the Idaho State College of Technology, got together and then put out a new, actually a new curriculum for welding. So we'll continue to work with them and try to expand our local companies. And some of the, some of the projects that we see on our success sheet are actually spinouts or results of our retention expansion program. And from the Shameless Commerce Division, Organic Development Corporation Economic Symposium that we hold every year will be October 26. You can get your tickets by contacting our office. We'll probably have a website up that you can buy them right through PayPal. So take your friends, take your neighbors. It's our big fundraiser for the year. So anyways, the big thing about that will be is we'll have a presentation on the project that we were just at, the Buck Sweeney and at Baylor. So some of the data that you weren't presented at the last meeting, U.S. Department of Labor is the source of these statistics. They're probably a little different than what you've seen before since our MSAs have been changed since last year. But since 2012, so five years essentially, you know, our workforce has gone up over 1,500 people. Unemployment has dropped almost by 2,000. And unemployment rate has dropped from 6.9% in 2012 to 2.8% now. And the Pocatello MSA, you know, average wage and salary, actually that's 2013, that 1802 per hour, has grown to 2,036 per hour or 42,340. Now, this is the average wage of all wages and salaries. This is not the covered employment that you see coming from the Department of Commerce. They pull that, those statistics, I believe, from the applications that they have and the companies that post jobs that are needed. But this is from the Department of Labor, so it takes into account all wage salary earners, professionals as well as hourly. So $4,850 a year.
Is there an age structure to that at all or?
That's just the average they pull for everybody. I'm sure we could probably break that down.
You know what I'm saying? Because we've got a lot of fast foods and probably a lot of kids that work 15, 20 hours a week, stuff like that.
So some other information, the big news, Bannock County is the top job, has the top job creation rate in Idaho. And that was the announcement that the governor made earlier this summer at the governor's breakfast. So we're really proud of that and as you are too, I'm sure. And so we look forward to continue working to get more folks and jobs that fit their, their talents and their abilities. So we have less unemployment or underemployment, I should say. Job applications went from 1993 in 2012 to 753 in July this year. And the jobs available were 977. And these are the number of people that are looking for jobs, the number of people that are under unemployment, and then the jobs that are available. So there were 224 more jobs posted with the Department of Labor for Pocatello-Chubak than there were people to fill them. So that's a good problem to have. And so we work really hard to help try to fill that, that gap. Some of the projects that help contribute to that tight labor market, ZipKit Homes, they're going to create 40 jobs. They're looking for some more space right now to accommodate their specific needs. And so we look forward to working with them and doing a ribbon cutting at their, their final location. Bully Dog, they're, they're done remodeling that facility and they're starting to pull on most of those 50 high-tech jobs that are going to be there. That's a, that's a big save for the community. Otherwise, we would have lost 50 high-tech jobs. Instead, we have potential to grow to 100. Great Western Balton, you all were at that ribbon cutting. That was really an exciting event and it's really an impressive facility. I don't know, Peter Kors was there, the guy that's the president of Kors. Couldn't get a card out of that guy. Gave him mine. He hasn't called back yet. So Amy's Kitchen, good news there. 600 people they're slated to have on deck at, in September, in this month sometime. Now, I don't know if they'll make that, but they're, they're due to be up, I think, like to 700 by the end of the year. So they're, they're going to hit that in the next month at least.
So John, do you remember how many employees were employed at Heinz when they left?
Four, 400.
400. And so we're now going to be 200 more than that. By the end of the year, we'll have 300 more employees working there than what we had at Heinz.
Exactly, exactly.
Good trade.
Better culture. People enjoy those jobs more. And they are not expressing any stress over finding people to work, which amazed me. I couldn't, couldn't believe it. I had lunch a couple of weeks ago with the plant manager and they said, no, we're finding people and we're having no problem retaining them. So for the folks in that industry, they're obviously a good employer.
Good. John, is the, back to Great Western, is the University of Oregon study available?
Yeah, I can get you a copy of that.
Okay.
And we're working right now with one of these staff people from the Barley Commission to get job creation. So FBI, obviously, you know, they're starting their project, their data center, starting construction on that as well. By the time we're done between the accountants they started data on two years ago and the people that they employ there, they'll have added 350 new people. We hear murmurs that there's more to come besides that. But I think they have to take a look and see what the capacity is and what their footprint's going to be like. Buchanan and Edwards is a company that contracts with them and they've just been awarded a vendor contract to work for the FBI. They're going to start with 20 people. Also, they're an ISU partner. They've partnered up with ISU for internships to train people that can take their positions. They're highly qualified, highly trained people. You know, they earn anywhere from 80 to 100, $10,000 a year. And so they are looking for people that really have some specific skills. And, you know, we took a look at that with Farmers and there were only a couple of people with Farmers Group that could do the kind of IT work that they need. So they're happy to partner with Corey Scowen and his team. On Semiconductor continues to be a big success story. 90 jobs, they had 90 jobs advertised last year. It's always kind of hard to give the exact number of employees, but it's 700 plus. You know, and that was, that was when the 90 people got advertised. So 970 or 790, my book, but $30 million they invested last year or this, this year. That's, that's after 64 million in the last six years. They're going to be investing comparable amounts this coming year in 2018. So the important thing about that is, is that as long as they keep investing, that facility is going to stay here. It's a dog-eat-dog world in semiconductor land and just within the same company. They all compete for these expansions, for these sites. And so we're able to keep it in a large extent because of the tax exemption program. And I think several members of this body can testify to the fact that we have to work pretty hard to keep that, that incentive viable and effective. There's, there's been attempts from the state level to the local level to try to undermine our ability to prolegate that. And so far, we've been able to keep everybody on track and keep that effective. And, you know, in talking with, you know, the folks at On Semiconductor, if it wasn't for that program, when it was looking like, you know, that that program might be complicated, they were saying, if we can't get that done, we're going to be very hard put to invest more in Pocatello. So it's an important program and we've done a lot of work in the last two years to make sure that it works well. So this, this tight labor market that we talk about requires some reaction from us. And we've worked regionally on the Year Fit program, Your Future in Technology. This past year, we did surveys right at the event. So we've got some hands-on, you know, data with the exact same people that took the preliminary survey as well as the, the exit survey at our expos, at our job and career technology expos. And the surveys for students coming in showed 56 of the high school students didn't have any knowledge of the careers that we were putting up there. And you've got a handout that shows those careers. Last year, it was 70%. So we did, we did move that bar. 38% knew a little. So we went out and did, you know, nine expos for these nine career and technology, these nine technical careers that are high wage, high demand, and high technology. And we saw a 17% increase in the knowledge of these from the 5% to 6%. So we're making good headway. And of course, these are the nine high-tech, high-paid, high-demand careers. Some of them, of course, you can tell are from the INL, who is our main sponsor for the program, information and cybersecurity, unmanned aerial systems, nuclear operating techs, and actually the maintenance mechanics, which you wouldn't expect. But those are the four that they really had to have. They need welders and machinists as well. But we, we had a need for those folks as well. So the results on that, you know, our investment in jobs and revenue, you know, as I mentioned before, we've led the state this past year in, in job or talent-based development. And we're starting up again, plan on next year. It's going to have a different approach. We're probably going to look at going out or getting the schools to come into the College of Technology to give them a more direct and effective workshop. And so we're going to run a pilot project on that. If that works well, we'll go on for more money and see if we can make some more impact. So and our proven track record, as you see from our sheets, and you'll see more in the executive session from the prospects that we have. So once again, thank you very much for your support.
Any questions for Mike here for John? Super. Thank you, John. Appreciate. Appreciate it. Appreciate your work. And with that, we are adjourned from our city council study session, and we'll move right into our executive session.